Lauren, Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino.
President.
Councilwoman McCartney.
President.
Councilman Rutherford.
President.
Councilwoman Williams.
President.
Council President Matouk Brown.
President, thank you very much, and welcome everyone to our Tuesday evening council meeting. On our conference agenda, we have a proclamation reading, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Castellino to please introduce their proclamation.
Yes, thank you very much. This evening, we have our library director, David QB, who is here. We wanted to take a moment to honor his staff for the tremendous job that they have done this past year during the pandemic. As we all know, you know, services shut down last March for the township, and quickly, we tried to provide whatever kind of lifeline we could to our community. And Mr. QB and his staff, what's that lifeline? And they reached out, they came up with so many creative ideas on how to keep our public safe, entertained. They created online activities, delivery services, and then when most of us remained at home, when things started opening up a little bit, his staff did not. They were back at work in full swing last June 15th. So, we appreciate their service to our community, and we thought it was very appropriate to have a resolution tonight recognizing their service to our township. And I'd just like to read it before I bring Mr. QB on. Resolution recognizing West Orange Public Library staff for their service during coronavirus-19 pandemic. So, the staff closed its doors to the public due to the coronavirus-19 pandemic, March 14, 2020. The staff adapted services to the community by creating hundreds of virtual programs answering questions remotely and increasing electronic streaming resources for the community for remote entertainment and learning. Staff resumed delivery of materials to homebound seniors without internet at home, May 4, 2020. They resumed distribution of materials to the community with curbside service, June 15, 2020. The Township of West Orange used CARES Act funds to provide protective glass barriers, PPE, and hospital-grade carrier opticlean, HEFA filter, air scrubbers to protect the staff and the public. And, oh, I misspoke before, the library reopened its doors to the residents of West Orange in person for services on July 14, 2020. And this June 14, 2021, the West Orange Public Library will resume normal hours without residential restrictions. Now, therefore, let it be known, let it be acknowledged, that the dedicated staff of the West Orange Public Library, Elaine Carraro, Cynthia Coulter, Dave QB, Donna Fenske, Penel G. Noel, Pedro Collation, Raji Krishnan, Olga Kaharets, Maria LaFrank, Lenny Martinez, Rosemary O'Pondo, Lana Pecker, Brian Plank, Shawna Presley, Jose Romero, Deborah Sarr, Jane Sawyer, Christina Veriano, and Amy Wong have fully and enthusiastically embraced their responsibilities as public servants to the community in their time of need to the fullest extent allowed by state, county, and local regulations. The West Orange Township Council would like to extend its sincere gratitude to them for their service during the coronavirus-19 pandemic and wish them continued health and safety as we continue towards a recovery for our community. Thank you. And Mr. QB, if you'd like to say a few words about your dedicated staff? Is he muted?
Yes, I am unmuted now. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Castellino, and council members, and everyone in West Orange. We know that there are over 15% of the people in West Orange that don't have broadband internet at home, 10% don't have computers at home, and as much important as it was and amazing to be able to serve the community virtually, we also know that virtual does not cut it for all services. And we also felt it was very important that the people of the community during their time of need had their local services serving them to the fullest extent possible. I just want to express to the community the expressions from my staff, of the library staff, in the fall, before we'd gotten the air scrubbers to filter the air, and we were heading into cold and flu season, and we weren't going to be able to have our doors open and provide fresh air. And I expressed to them, I'm really concerned as we're heading into this, and I, you know, I need your input, because I don't want to put you unnecessarily at risk. I want to know what your feelings are. And their immediate response was, but the seniors, but the parents and the children. And I want the people of West Orange to understand what a prize they have in the staff of the West Orange Public Library, because they are truly a gem. And I'm very proud to be their director, and also a fantastic library board that has been meeting throughout and supporting us. So, I just want to say thank you to everyone, and it's our pleasure and our honor to serve the people of West Orange.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Council President.
You're very welcome. Dave, while you're on, I just want to express and share with your staff and the residents just how much of a gem they have in your leadership as director for your continued advocacy for their well-being and making sure that there's access for our residents at all times. So, thank you for your dedication and your service to our community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren, can we see if Megan Brill is on?
Yes, I answer, I answer to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. She is. Did you like me to bring her over?
Yes, please. I just wanted her to fill us in on downtown.
Sure. Meg, don't touch your computer, it's gonna change in one moment. And Mr. QB, I'm gonna send you back over to the attendee pool, your screen is gonna change as well. Okay, and Ms. Brill, if you can start your video and unmute yourself for us.
Dave did great. I see him all the time when I'm pulling in Town Hall, he's already underneath the library, and he's on his phone, and somebody else is trying to talk to him. They're a bunch of busy people, and what he said was really great about the library staff, made me proud to be a West Oranger. Sorry, I'm Megan Brill with the Downtown Alliance. I'm gonna share my screen, I have just three things that I wanted to share with.
Oh, sure. Let me just unshare my screen.
Sure.
Okay, it's all yours.
All right. The first thing, that is something that we have been talking about, can you see the Downtown Thursday logo?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, we are kicking off, instead of our street fair, we decided to put all of our efforts in eight smaller events that we're gonna have in June and July. We thought that it would be great to welcome people downtown in a safe way, that we can control people in the four areas of downtown and make sure that everyone is safe, the business owners and people that are visiting our area. So, we are kicking off on June 3rd in the Eagle Rock section of downtown, which is that intersection of Mississippi, Harrison Avenue, Main Street, and Eagle Rock. The address for the parking lot is 3 Mississippi Avenue, and we're holding a three-hour event there. There's information that is out now on our Facebook page and the website, it'll be in the newsletter that the township sends out again this week, and there'll be an event link that you can sign up for, three different tours, a 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, and 6 o'clock tour. And we're gonna narrate a little bit of food from the area and history, and good old lore about the Eagle Rock section of our downtown. And then, following Thursday nights, we're gonna move down to the next sections. So, we'll do Torrey Corner, St. Mark's, and then the Valley. And then, we get to repeat all of that in July. So, there'll be a lot of information out there on Facebook and Instagram and in our newsletter, and we hope that you come and join us. We also are having a band that is playing on the dais of Our Lady of Lourdes Church. So, if you choose not to do the tour, or if you want to do the tour and then grab something to eat at one of the businesses in the area, we'll have tables and chairs to set up, and you can enjoy the band, which is West Orange's own Sheldon Senic from Alden Street. So, we're excited about that, and we're excited about kicking things off in downtown for the summer. The other thing that I wanted to share with you all about, we had ribbon cutting, oops, where'd it go? We had a ribbon, we had a ribbon cutting, it keeps moving, hang on. Zoom is good and bad, right? I'm sorry, it was all queued up, I don't know where it went. Here it is. Oh, I get it, I was pulling the wrong thing. Okay, so, two things about this, we're welcoming a new medical office that is, it was an abandoned house, the house had been abandoned for about 10 years, and then it took like three or four years to get it sold and renovated, and now West Orange residents bought it, and the couple is a doctor and a contractor. The doctor's office is in the front port of this newly renovated house, and the contractor is in the back. We had ribbon cutting last, I guess, two Saturdays ago now, welcoming them to the downtown and celebrating their practice. The inside is beautiful, and the other thing that I wanted to explain, this new layout, this is part of our new marketing and branding, that all of our ribbon cuttings are going to have this type of picture with that ribbon cutting ceremony, so that as folks see it out of the corner of their eye, they will know what it's all about. So, we're very excited to be partnering with them. They already joined the farmer's market as a vendor, and there was another resident, Seth Weidner, that held an event up at the Clipper Pavilion, and one of his sponsors for that event was True Ally. So, they're getting into every aspect of, you know, what we do and how we do it, and are very excited to be here with us. So, all right, I'm sorry, that's my quick bit off. And then, the last thing is something that I want everyone to sign up for, we've been talking about our sign up for of our newsletter. If you remember, we spoke a couple of months ago that we were partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and the township and downtown to get more people signed up for our newsletter. We really want to try to create an omni-channel of approach to our marketing, so that we're sharing information along multiple facets, where we concentrate, you know, a little bit of effort in Instagram and effort in Facebook, and also on our newsletter. And we have created a new masthead for the newsletter, and that's, here it is, okay. And absolutely, Sue McCartney, I have a question for you, can you see the newsletter? It says newsletter in neon?
Yes.
Great. Thomas Edison invented neon, right? I'm pretty sure he created neon light.
I can check on that.
Well, this is actually a picture of, the lower picture here, is a picture of Main Street from LeWell and Park. I almost didn't recognize it, it's hard to figure out, but we're kind of back by the gatehouse looking out onto Main. So, we're excited, this will be a picture that is seasonal, will be in the background, and the newsletter with our logo will be in the forefront. So, we hope that people will sign up for that, and that's again at westorange sign up dot com. You can sign up for Township, Chamber of Commerce, and downtown. You can pick all of them or one of them, and hopefully, you'll be getting news on a regular basis from all three places that'll provide hopefully all the information that you need about town. That is all that I have for you. If there's any questions.
I have who invented the neon light.
Oh, thanks.
Georges Claude of France invented the neon lamp in 1911.
There you go, all right. I'm still gonna say Edison did. All right. Excuse me, Ms. Brill, can you just let the council know about approximate time when we'll be launching the Townwide Mobile app? Yes. Okay, so, one of the things that we were able...
Oh, no, Ms. Brill, she has frozen, unfortunately. Ms. Brill, are you able to hear us?
Yeah, sometimes that happens to her.
And where she is.
Office, yeah.
She still is on the call, but she's frozen, it might drop her off.
Okay.
But hopefully, it'll catch her up, and she'll be able to catch up before the public meeting.
Gee, we can help, you know.
Oh, there she is.
So, we are utilizing her to help us get the TownMobile app off the ground. The app will be hopefully the one place that everyone in town will go to find out information about town council meetings, recycling, what day it is, and what you can put out there. There'll be information about OSPEC and the farmer's market downtown, it'll have a separate tab for restaurants, that all the restaurants will be linked there, will have attractions like the zoo and the golf course, and Thomas Edison National Historic Park, of course. We are meeting now with as many people that will talk to me about what's important, what's important information that you need at your fingertips. There'll be links to Facebook, so that it'll be easy for folks to find, you know, information. I keep asking my board to like, share, and comment our stuff, and I'm hoping that when it's an easy link right to the Facebook page, they'll be able to do it more frequently and share all the information that we have. So, we're hoping that the app will launch in the beginning of June. We did just get the prototype of the front page of the app, and I'm gonna be meeting with six people, and we're gonna narrow that down. And that's the first part. The second part will be gathering all the information that needs to get into the app. One of the things that we identified coming into this year, and you may remember at the 2 o'clock in the morning board meeting that our budget was used for, that we talked about that, that we need to better attract the people that are coming to the zoo, the golf course, and the National Historic Park, and keep them here spending money instead of going elsewhere to, you know, get something to eat or buy a cup of coffee. So, the app really will be a place that every one of those folks in town and people visiting will be able to go and download that. The other thing that we know is something that people always think that there's no parking downtown, or they're not sure where to park. Well, there'll be a specific link right to our parking lots, and I'm hoping that the police department will work with me in creating links for the parking lots that are outside of the corridor. So, we have, you know, a few up in Pleasantale, and there's parking lots, you know, all over town, and there's no reason why we can't link to the four that we have, and then, you know, the other 16 or 20 that the township has. So, we really, the downtown is sponsoring the app, but we know that it'll be well worth the download if there's vast majority of information that you can get. And this way, I'm real excited, everyone always says, I didn't know the farmer's market opened, I didn't know this was happening at OSPEC, I don't know, you know, I don't know when anything is happening. And this way, they'll be able to go to the app, those links will be set up, and then the link to OSPEC will be done. You'll just have to go to that link, little icon, OSPEC, and you'll get the schedule, which will definitely make it easier for people to find out info, ask questions, and be more informed. So, those are a lot of busy things happening in the next couple of months, but we're excited. And I think that we have a shot at pulling that all off because of the summer intern that we get to work with us. So, we're excited about Anna coming to play with all of us downtown.
Thank you, Ms. Brill, for all of the chock full of information. I'm happy that you shared that information about the app. I think it's a great way to keep us all in touch. So, thank you so much for all of the work that you and the Downtown Alliance are doing to make sure that we are starting to get ourselves out there.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, would you like to start, share your council liaisons?
Sure. So, as you can see, we're very busy. Thank you to Ms. Brill and her hardworking commissioners, they've been doing a great job, and really excited about all things downtown this summer. The PR Commission will be on hand, we just met the other night, to assist in all these activities. They will be at the farmer's market this weekend to help promote Downtown Thursdays and hand out flyers, and also explain to people what the event is all about, and try to answer any questions that they can. Eventually, when we roll out the app, they'll play a big part in that as well to assist Ms. Brill. And congratulations to the farmer's market on a great, successful start. This past Saturday, Stacy and Rob Reese and all their volunteers did a tremendous job, and we appreciated, and heard of, they had a great turnout, and with the newsletter that Ms. Brill mentioned, and Suasion, the new firm, that her consulting firm, that's been on hand pushing a lot of this information out, we really saw some great measures of success. So, we're really looking forward as we progress, and it was a beautiful day for people to come out. So, May is Older Americans Month, and we take this time and this moment to appreciate all our older Americans here in West Orange, and I call them our A-Team of Laura Van Dyke, Dorothy Saunders, and Noel Perez, that have been working tirelessly to provide programming for older Americans, and they had worked with a few of our older Americans in their community, and we want to thank Abe Rosary, Dorothy, Pat, Laura, and Althea for some quotes that they have, will be sharing with all of you, and you will see these lovely quotes with the heart-shaped sign in a lot of our storefronts. So, we want to, they're called Legacy of Love, and we appreciate all who participated, and also to our team for putting that out there. There will be a fun pickleball event for older Americans to celebrate this month, this Friday, at O'Connor Park, starting at 11:00 a.m. Benjies will be on hand, food truck there for some great lunch. So, for all those who are available on Friday to come out to play pickleball or just watch, and everything, of course, is socially distant and safe, come on out and enjoy, hopefully, a beautiful afternoon. The weather's supposed to be lovely this week. And of course, we have our yoga and our aerobic starting up at Jenny Dunkle Pool, they're already in full swing, so we appreciate all those events. And congratulations to True Ally, beautiful, beautiful office. Her husband's a contractor, and he did all the work, so he did a really great job. And I just want to thank Mr. Lepore and the Police Department, they received a $700,000, a $708,000 grant for streetscape improvements for the Washington Corridor. So, we'll see some improvements there, so we appreciate all his hard work in getting that done. And if you pass by Supreme Bakery, most of the work is done around there for the new pass-through that we're creating with brick pavers between the parking lot and the sidewalk area. So, we thank everyone for all their hard work. And let's see, if I have anything else, and sake of time, I will be done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so very much, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to continue with all the good news. I wanted to commend Dave QB and the library staff as well for all that they do, but in particular, during this most difficult year, keeping spirits high and the deliverables available to the community. I wanted to thank the Police Department also for sharing their Mental Health Association of Essex and Morris outstanding outcome reports, so I do hope that that program continues. Megan and Councilwoman Castellino just talked about the farmer's market continued success to Stacy and Rob Reese, they had a great bustling first day, so just continue, and the farmer's market team, so all the volunteers that helped. Let's see, West Orange Arts Council, June 5th, they're starting, you know, we've done performing arts with music and exhibits, now they are starting a literacy arts group workshop on June 5th. And you can visit W O Arts dot org for more information about the existing exhibits. And it seems like the Juneteenth event is turning into a town-wide event, because the HRC, yes, we're gonna talk about that, the HRC, the library, the youth council at Colgate, NAACP flag raising, music, it just sounds like it's just growing from one end of the corridor to the other. So, that's, plans are in the works for that. On the planning board, the Tompkins Street, 17 affordable housing units were approved by the planning board at the last meeting, and the next meeting will be June 2nd at 7:30. It will be a Zoom meeting, and information will be provided on the township website. The West Orange Environmental Commission also will meet next Wednesday, May 26th, at 7 o'clock, and that information will be posted via Zoom link will be posted on the town website at westorange.org. The Chamber of Commerce tomorrow, their Biz 2.0 speaker series is, that's underway, so they have a guest speaker tomorrow, Howard Madelon. On June 16th will be Dr. Sandra Lewis, and in July 13, Jay Berkowitz. Excellent speaker series coming out of COVID. And please save the date for collaboration with the Chamber and OSPEC of July 30th. Those plans are in the works too, for a summer social up at OSPEC. So, I did have information, I was pleased that Councilwoman Castellino mentioned the information that came out today on the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority's approval of the $780,000 project. I appreciate their report that we received from Rock Spring on their income statement. And I think that's it, and I was looking forward to the Economic Development meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to begin with open space, we met last, our last meeting was at Rock Spring, it was outside on the patio, which is normally a beautiful place. Unfortunately, that particular day, it was cold and rainy, so attendance was down, but we still handled quite a bit of business. Our next meeting is going to be at OSPEC, I believe. Susan, Councilwoman McCartney will correct me if I'm wrong. So, we're at OSPEC. So, for anyone that wants to come out, it should be good weather, it will be in June, June 2nd, and so we're looking forward to having another productive meeting.
Bring along, Chuck.
Bring along chair.
Yeah. Your favorite beverage, uh, and anything else you think that might help the meeting along. Um, need to say something regarding uh, pedestrian safety advisory board. Uh, I, I understand the uh, issues that have been brought uh, with regard to the busing changes uh, in town. And um, I want everyone to know that uh, unfortunately, the pedestrian safety advisory board was not included in the discussions leading up to that decision. Now, our superintendent has acknowledged the oversight um, and has pledged to uh, make sure that the pedestrian safety advisory board is included in uh, decisions like that going forward. And it is critical uh, because while um, we uh, may be complying with the law. Uh, where students that live within two and a half miles are not required uh, to be bused to their school. We have a unique topography here. Uh, we also have un, uh, incomplete sidewalks. Uh, Pleasant Valley Way where the high school is located is a four lane road. Um, and it is difficult to cross. So we certainly want to make sure that our students uh, are safe on the way to and from school and look forward to helping uh, craft whatever the uh, additional changes are uh, for the fall. Um, this is not a council liaison, but wanted to uh, announce that our Green West Orange had a very successful tree giveaway. Um, last Saturday, I believe it was at Washington School and Gregory and over seven hundred trees were given away. If you would still like one, there are a few left. You can reach out to our Green West Orange directly. You can um, reach them through their website, uh, contact any of the members or contact me. Uh, and I, oh, and this Sunday, uh, May twenty third, five o'clock PM, our uh, council colleague Susan McCartney is being honored um, by Course Wick uh, at their financial literacy fundraiser. So uh, shout out to uh, Councilwoman McCartney. Uh, she does a, quite a bit of work and is um, spread uh, all over town. Uh, and so that work does not go unnoticed. Uh, and she's receiving an award uh, this coming Sunday. Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and congratulations, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, Council President. So just to uh, report, the rent leveling board met on four, six. And I am very pleased to announce that the uh, Llewellyn Park uh, gatehouse is underway with renovations. Uh, we don't anticipate those renovations to be complete until September. Um, but they are indeed underway. And the next rent leveling board meeting will be on the uh, first Thursday of June. In addition, um, the I'm sorry, I said rent leveling board. The next rent leveling board meeting will be on the first Thursday of June. And so we actually met. Um, we discussed what the role of the rent leveling board will be. Um, and we do want to eh, say to the public that we are um, in a position to per ordinance handle disputes between landlords and tenants. Uh, the rent leveling board has not met for several years. However, we do have a revamped website. And if there are any concerns with rents uh, between landlords or tenants, please reach out. Uh, there is an opportunity to communicate your uh, needs uh, on the website. So we do have a revamped website, website uh, with additional information on tenant rights as well as landlord rights. The Historic Preservation Commission met on four twelve, twenty twenty one. Um, and they did approve the revamping of the uh, gatehouse, and that is underway. Um, that will and should be complete by September as long as everything is on schedule. And um, at that meeting, the past meeting, we did um, indicate that there was approval for the certificate um, to approve the repairs. Um, the, we also have about five different properties that we will move forward with designating as a uh, historic preservation um, community, institution or establishment. And so look forward to having a special meeting for the community. Um, date and specifics to come on those five specific areas that we should be designating as a historic preservation entity. In addition to that, um, the Rentable, Renter Board um, did not meet at its scheduled time. We are scheduled to meet tomorrow. Um, and continued updates will be forthcoming. In addition to those announcements, I want to make everyone aware um, that May is designated as Mental Health Awareness Month since nineteen forty nine. Uh, different affiliates across the country have observed May as Mental Health Month. Uh, what we do is we hope that media, local events and screenings um, will make everyone aware of the fact that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. The COVID nineteen pandemic has per, has had a profound impact on mental health from people of all ages. And so it is the goal of Mental Health Awareness Month um, to help others adapt to trauma and stress, deal with anger and frustration, um, get out of thinking traps and to process big changes. We know that the governor has lifted a tremendous amount of COVID restrictions this month. And that we will be returning to some sense of normalcy. Yes, we do still have a mask mandate in the state of New Jersey, unlike our neighboring states. However, we do encourage all of our residents to get the COVID vaccine. Uh, we do know that the Pfizer vaccine is available for ages twelve to fifteen. We also know that in-person learning will be mandated um, for all schools in New Jersey, starting in the fall. Um, so I just encourage everyone to understand and to be aware um, that mental health awareness is as essential as your physical health awareness. It is okay to not be okay. Do not feel any type of stigma or anticipation about acknowledging that your mental health is as important as your physical health. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman uh, Williams, so much for all of that information. And I'm excited that the rent leveling board did in fact um, have their first meeting and look forward to um, the developments of your next. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to now move on to um, some very exciting Ospac announcements. Um, June fifth is their uh, band in group. So they will have their grand opening for the season on um, on June fifth. And um, just to follow up on the farmer's market, they're always in need of volunteers. Please be sure to reach out and, and um, make yourselves available should you have time. Um, and um, certainly meet new neighbors while you're there and make uh, new friends. Happy to say that the HRC is also organizing a uh, gay pride caravan. They're working with our chief of police and our police department to ensure uh, safety conditions are met. So very excited about that. Um, and if we can do a screen share, Lauren, just wanted to, uh, thank you. Um, share with the residents that um, I will be hosting a cannabis town hall on Monday, May twenty fourth from six to eight PM. The information for the Zoom will be on a, uh, on the township website. So please be sure to join us. This discussion is going to um, have on the panel, our mayor, our chief of police, um, our legal department and members from the cat, the uh, the cannabis advisory group. Um, just to help us all become better educated, to better understand what the law that now exists means for us here in West Orange as we begin to craft our ordinance. Um, I just want to make sure that uh, myself, my colleagues, my administration and our residents are well informed as to um, what this all means for our township. So please save the date on your calendars. Monday, May twenty fourth from six to eight PM. Registration is required and the information is going live on the township website this evening. So please be sure to mark your calendars and um, look forward to that discussion. Um, and those are all the announcements that I had. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty One, Public Law nineteen seventy five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November thirtieth, twenty twenty and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December tenth, twenty twenty. Councilwoman Catalina.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Matute Brown.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance
Allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic
For which it stands One nation Under God and indivisible with liberty and
and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And um, we will now begin public comments. Please, um, Ms. Lauren, thank you. I saw you there.
No problem. Uh, yes, it's time for public comments. So you'll be using the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. If you're one of our call-in patrons, it is star nine. And this is a reminder, you do not have to wait for anyone to finish speaking before you raise your hand. You will be put in a queue. So Mr. Fagan, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, greetings to you, Council President and members of the Town Council and Administration. I am, of course, Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Uh, this evening I would, uh, I will be brief. I just would like to point out that this annual memorial, that the annual Memorial Day Ceremony, which was canceled last year due to COVID, will be returning this year and is open to the public. It will take place in its usual place on the steps of Town Hall on Monday, May thirty first at ten AM. That, of course, is Memorial Day. This year's ceremony will be especially meaningful for several reasons. It will mark the hundredth anniversary of the founding of VFW Post number three seventy six in West Orange in October nineteen twenty one. This year I researched and wrote a brief history on its founding that will be included in a special expanded program with some pictures. It's interesting to see that many of the Post's original founding members went on to serve the town in several roles. James Sayers, for whom the Post is partially named, is the great uncle of town, bit, business administrator Jack Sayers. And my great uncle Richard J. Fagan was among one of the founding members. Of course, this year's ceremony commemorating the celebration of the hundredth anniversary of the VFW Post comes with a dark shadow. As you know, longtime Post Commander Ralph Pansiello passed away earlier this year. And he will be remembered and honored this year in a special way. Finally, this is also the first Memorial Day Ceremony where the hometown hero banners instituted by the Downtown West Orange Alliance are proudly on display all along Main Street. We are once again reminded why West Orange is known as New Jersey's most decorated community. A ride down Main Street is now a ride down a canyon of heroes. So all are invited to come on May thirty first, Monday, May thirty first at ten AM as our annual Memorial Day, Day Ceremony makes a triumphant return to the steps of Town Hall to honor our West Orange veterans who have fallen in the line of duty. Thank you, Council President. That is all I have this evening and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Lisa Tuzo. If you can um, follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
What is deterrence? All right, Karen, pick another clip.
Okay. That's Jeopardy. Lisa, are you there?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to raise my hand.
Oh, that's okay. No problem. I'll mute you. Well, now spoiler alert for Jeopardy. Uh, Nancy Warschowski, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Nancy, N A N C Y, as in yellow. Warschowski, W A R S like in Sam, H as in happy, O as in owl, W as in war, S like in Sam, K like in Kentucky, Y as in yellow at forty-five Dogwood Road. Okay, may I begin?
Yes, here I sit.
Okay, uh, first, uh, I have several questions for the council members and good evening to everybody. The very first thing, um, I guess is addressed to Bill Rutherford or for the pedestrian advisory board. Um, said it was not included, the busing changes. Uh, Dr. Coscone acknowledged that. Um, for, I've been living in town for thirty-three years and in thirty-three years, the safety um, is not, the, the safe streets have, they've not been for the most part made safe. And I'm wondering what the town is planning to do in conjunction with the county to make them safe. It can be made safe, but will you make it safe? That's the first thing. So I would like an answer to that. But uh, before I, I just want to quickly get to the questions real quick. Um, um, let's see, as for True Ally, how do you, well, how do you reach those without a computer? I guess that's for everything here. Um, let's see, um, but, and at Ospac, will you be spraying for mosquitoes and ticks? Uh, advertising the, will the market, farmer's market be advertised outside of West Orange? I guess that's from Stacy Lees and um, her husband and uh, Megan Brill. Um, Catalino, uh, streetscape improvement consists of what? Um, it's around Supreme Bakery doing what exactly? And as for mental health, um, what training is our police going to receive regarding uh, handling people with mental health issues? You know, somebody might not comply and it might not be non-compliance. It might be a whole host of various mental health issues. Uh, could be an anxiety attack. It could be dementia, could be all kinds of things. So I would like to know uh, what the police chief and the mayor have to say about that as far as uh, increasing training for police about that. Um, the open space meeting is June second at what time? That's for Bill Rutherford. Um, and you needed, you, uh, do need a chair and whatnot. Uh, Ms. Um, McCartney, you're being awarded for what? Your award is for what exactly? Congratulations, but I don't know what I'm congratulating you on. And um, maybe to have one more note here, uh, if I can read it. Oh, Ms. Williams, the rent leveling board. Um, maybe you can explain more about what that is. And the website, you didn't give the website address. You said it was revamped. And I guess you're going to tell us more about the five properties to be announced, um, which are going to be um, put on the historic for preservation or hoping it'll go on for preservation. Um, and I think um, oh, the, something is going to be fixed up. Oh, no, Joe Fagan. Um, are they going to fix up the VFW building because it's been in disrepair for a long time and a hundred years, it's time to, I guess, fix it up. So hopefully the town will address all these issues and thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. And next, we have, it's listed as ASL interpreter hyphen M K. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is M K Adams. I live on Park Drive South. I'm an ASL interpreter by profession, so that's why it comes up on the Zoom account.
No problem. Thank you. Lauren, I had trouble hearing the name and the address. Uh, yes, can you just repeat your name and address and if you can possibly get a little closer to your computer's microphone?
My name is Barry Kay, M K Adams. I live at five Park Drive South.
Thank you.
I have emailed the Council President and been in touch with the zoning officer about this concern. Although details have not yet been submitted to the zoning board for review, there is a plan to redevelop the property at four ten Main Street at the corner of Park Drive North. I and my neighbors strongly oppose the plan that was presented to us on April twenty first by the development team. The property is currently occupied by a single house built in seventeen eighty-seven. The proposal is to develop the property into a five-story mixed-use building with thirty-one rental apartments and eleven hundred square feet of retail space. The scale of the building is outrageous and wholly incongruous with the neighborhood. A five-story building would dwarf every nearby structure. The 31 residences with a total of 50 bedrooms could potentially double the current population of the neighborhood. This project would irreparably harm the quiet neighborhood of the Park Drive Loop, Ashwood Terrace, Park Terrace, and Cherry Street. It would cause pedestrian safety and traffic congestion problems at the mouth of the small commercial district that surrounds the Degnan House for Seniors at the base of Eagle Rock Avenue. This property is one-tenth of a mile from Edison Middle School. There is no evidence of demand for more apartments in this area of town. There is definitely no evidence of demand for more retail space on Main Street. Many current retail spaces are vacant. The retail spaces in the Edison lofts have yet to be occupied since they were constructed. The building plan provides only 24 interior parking spaces for 31 apartments. 21 additional parking stalls are allocated in a lower level for overflow and customers of the retail space. There is not nearly enough parking in the neighborhood right now. Inadequate parking availability is among the top stressors for those of us who live in the neighborhood. This building would exponentially increase that stress. We formed a Facebook group, 410 Main Street W-O, all one word. The Facebook page has details of the plan and our concerns. We are in the process of collecting signatures on a petition that expresses our opposition to this project in more detail. To a person, no one who lives in the neighborhood that I have spoken with thinks this building is a good idea. Thank you very much for allowing me to bring this to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Virginia Murchison. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Virginia Murchison, 7 Park Drive West, West Orange. I'm totally against the project on 410 Main Street. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next, we have Anthony Nicotera. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Anthony Nicotera, 8 Undercliffe Terrace South, just below the Rock Spring Club. So I wanted to begin by thanking Council President Mathieu Brown and Councilman Rutherford for joining us in a community conversation. And I wanted to speak to the development at the Rock Spring Club briefly. I think we have an opportunity to do great things for our community and for the township of West Orange on that property. However, I think we should avoid at all costs further residential development there. I don't think that's the answer. I think that there are many opportunities to creatively develop that property, and we should focus on community benefit and prioritize beauty and access and community benefits such that that space can be utilized by the community, for the community. It might be even a premier destination for the community. We might have, and I know Council President Mathieu Brown had mentioned something like a spa resort, restaurant, some kind of an entertainment even venue that might be small as part of the restaurant, for example, something that would really be a destination. I'm not a good golfer, but I do golf. And I actually have a number of friends who are good golfers. They didn't even realize the course was public. And they think it's a premier destination for golfers, and I know we've already seen that in terms of the revenue and the cars that are coming from New York to golf. I think maintaining the integrity of the golf course can actually be an opportunity for us to grow revenue there and make that a real destination for, for golfers, again, and maybe an event space as well. I also love the idea that one of our, my neighbors brought up, Leanna, who said that, the Chico, that, you know, we could even have the farmer's market up there. And that would be a really wonderful way to use some of the open space that we might have there. I think, again, the answer is not, though, to do further residential development there. I think there are a lot of other creative ways that we can think comprehensively for community benefit. Although I, I understand that we don't have a city planner, and I know that that was something that Council President Mathieu Brown had hoped for. I would like to say that I think that would be a great benefit to the city so that we can think more comprehensively about development broadly throughout our township. But in the meantime, I shared with them in our meeting that I worked for many years at Rutgers University with the leadership at the Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy, as well as the School of Engineering. And my background is in law and social work. I did a lot of development work with them. They are experts, not only in the state but nationally in terms of city planning, and they are a great resource to us, and I will be happy to make introductions if necessary. But I think just wanted to say that especially the Blaustein School, in terms of their city planning expertise, might be, again, relatively inexpensive, even free potentially to us as the State University of New Jersey in terms of giving some expert advice and insights with respect to how we can maximize profit and benefit, as well as create kind of a community space that would be, again, a destination for folks. I do, so again, I just wanted to thank you for your time and mention one other thing. I teach over at Seton Hall now in the social work program, and I've done a lot of work during the COVID, time of COVID with respect to mental health. So to an earlier point, I just wanted to share that I've worked with a colleague, Dr. Juan Rios, on, with the Township of South Orange on rethinking policing and retraining police in this moment with respect to mental health training. And I would be happy to share more about the Community Care and Justice Program that we have going in South Orange if it might be of interest to us here in West Orange. Thank you very much for your time. I'm deeply grateful for all of you and your public service commitment. And I want to be more involved. I haven't been that involved. Been here 12 years, and this is my first meeting, so I'm grateful to, to join you, and I hope to do so more often. Thank you again.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Gerald Sweeney. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Gerald Sweeney, I see that you unmuted. We cannot hear you if you're talking. If you can mute yourself and then unmute yourself again. Okay. I still do not hear you. I apologize. If you just give me one moment, I'm going to mute you, and then we're going to go to the next person while I try to figure your situation out. We have Alex Kuratin. Pardon if I pronounced that wrong. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, actually, that's my son's name. He uses my computer for school occasionally, so my name is not Alex Kuratin. I'm Jacqueline Handy. I live at 134 Walker Road. I'm here with my husband, Jeff Kuratin, as well.
Hello.
I just want to echo my neighbor Anthony Nicotera's statements. I also attended that community meeting. I just want to encourage this administration to be very open and forthcoming and conscientious with how they develop these properties. There is a sentiment, whether it is actual or felt, it's feelings, but there is a sentiment among the population that a lot of this is done in, under, behind closed doors and in the dark and not including, purposefully including, community input. So I would like to see this Town Council actively engaging with our neighbors and our constituents here in the community. And that doesn't mean just saying, check online and look for details or check out social media. I want to see a letter coming in my mailbox, letting me know that there's a meeting happening. Actively engaging with the population. You guys are relying too much on busy, especially with this pandemic, dual households that are working and, and not even knowing that these meetings are happening, not even knowing that these developments are happening. I went around my neighbors and told them this, and I would tell you, 90% of them had no idea that this discussion was even taking place, and I'm not exaggerating. 90% of my neighbors had no idea that there is a discussion of having a four-story, 290-unit apartment building built on prime real estate, prime real estate. Enviable. It's the jewel of our community. And you have, and because of COVID, we have yet to really maximize the potential of that space. It is the jewel of our community. That and Eagle Rock, those views are enviable, rare, and unique. And I would like to see that our town take its time to develop this in an air, in, in a manner that it benefits the community. There, that could be a prime space for an event space, having a rooftop bar. This is, this is a community that is starved for spaces like that, that can bring our community together. And this is an opportunity, and it's not a coupon where we have to redeem the space at the place upon purchase. It's not like Best Buy, and I got a Best Buy coupon, and I have to go back to Best Buy to get, to redeem that money. We can develop and recoup the money that we spent on that elsewhere. If you need to have 290 units happen in our community, that can be done elsewhere, and I'm not trying to put this in anybody else's backyard. I would encourage you to focus your energy downtown and, and a, and a place that already has the infrastructure in place to support a large development like this. There are environmental concerns. We are at the top of a mountain. There is a lot to consider here, and I feel like there is not enough community engagement. And the onus is on you guys as our elected officials to bring us in, not on us to chase your tails. And yes, we, we, we do have that responsibility, and believe me, I'm going to be knocking. I am the, I am, I like walking. I like walking these hills, and I'm going to knock on every door, on every door, and put in a piece of paper, and we are going to come out en masse because we do not know about this. Guys do not engage with us enough, and social media isn't enough. I want a letter in my mailbox. You guys have to talk to us. This is, this is an opportunity. And I believe that you guys do have the best interest of our community at heart. I've met with a couple of you. I've looked in your eyeballs. I feel you are good people. This is not the way to do a development like this. There are professional resources available to us. There's a, a term that's new to me called a charrette, where we could get a community of people, of architects together, and develop this responsibly, economically speaking, environmentally speaking, and with active community participation. Thank you very much for your time, and I apologize if that was a little bit fast and rushed. I get passionate.
Yes, thank you very much for your time. And just to reiterate my wife's points, I think transparency is key in order to move forward with these developments. My wife mentioned the charrette. I can't think of a charrette, however it's pronounced.
Yeah.
Charrette.
It's new to us.
I, new to me, French word. I can't think of, you know, a more responsible way to allow the community to have, have a voice in these developments. It shouldn't, certainly should not be happening behind closed doors. The, the fact that we had to learn through word of mouth that there was a potential 300-unit apartment complex in our community was absolutely shocking, and we need to make sure that there's transparency moving forward. Thank you so much for your
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to try again for Gerald Sweeney.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, that's success. Must have been equipment failure. And good evening, Council President and Council Members. My name is Gerald Sweeney. I live at 24 Oak Bend, West Orange. I'm the president of the West Orange, the Friends of the West Orange Public Library. And first, I want to thank the council for its support for the library tonight and over the past couple of years. Tonight, you recognize by proclamation the importance of the library, and you thank them for their exceptional performance. That was much appreciated. You've also worked to establish a new library over the last, it must be two or three years. I lose track of the time. We thank you. All the things that you do for the library are essential. The library is really a key resource in the community. Second, I want to thank the library, the library director, Dave Cubey, and the entire staff. The library was such, was and is such an essential asset in this community. And what we saw over the last year and year-plus is how the library really performs a role and steps up and really shows how essential it is and does double duty, reaching out to the community. It provides education from childhood all the way to adults. And having a, having a good library is essential for a good community. A good library can help make the community. And again, we thank the library. We thank you for all of that. I also, somewhat related, I want to thank you, the, the time you spend in the beginning of the meetings, alerting people to what's going on, I think is really essential. I, I endorse that. And I look forward to seeing that newsletter as all the things going on because we have a spread-out community, and it's hard to find out what's going on. But thank you for all of that. And again, I just, the main thing is libraries essential. Keep up the support to get that new library and get that moving ahead, and it will pay rewards triple times over, and it'll continue to bring good things to the community. Thank you for your time, and good evening, and thank you for all your work that you do as council members.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Clara Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. It's Clara Silvestri, 20 Ramview Avenue. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to follow up with what Mr. Sweeney said and give a shout out to the West Orange Library Director and staff for all they've done to keep West Orange residents informed and connected during the pandemic. They are an outstanding and dedicated bunch led by Mr. Cubey. I also had a question about Resolution 10421 on the agenda tonight on the Professional Services Agreement with Fairview Insurance. The resolution states that Fairview, quote, "responded to the township's request for qualifications pursuant to a fair and open process for insurance broker services for 2021," unquote. Could someone please, from the administration or council, give us a detailed explanation of exactly how this, quote, "fair and open process," unquote, was conducted? And whether any other brokers were part of the solicitation process? I'd also like to ask why there hasn't yet been a resolution for a town forester contract in 2021. Tree management is an issue of great interest and concern for many town residents, and I believe many people would like some clarity as to whether Mr. Linsum's contract is being renewed. Finally, I wanted to express my dismay with the recent post on Mayor Parisi's Facebook page regarding a possible purchase of some Crestmont Country Club property. While I'm a strong advocate of preserving what's left of the open space in this town, as a communications professional, I found it irresponsible to put out that announcement without any other information, no mention of terms of the agreement or a price tag. Arguments that no further information could be released until the Crestmont members vote on the proposal, in my opinion, is pretty lame. If that's the case, then nothing should have been announced, released at this time. The council had an executive session at their last meeting about Crestmont, so I believe you must know the terms. And it appears, based on the mayor's announcement, that you've given a tacit approval to this deal without ever allowing your constituents to weigh in. So I hope we can receive more information on this issue tonight. And then, I know I said finally, but I do have a few final points based on some of the comments made by, by other residents tonight. I want to echo the concerns expressed by the people regarding the Rock Spring development. I absolutely agree with the comments that have been made so far. I also want to express my shock and dismay at the, the comments of the residents down on Park Drive North. I'm very familiar with that property, and I cannot believe that, that, that anyone is considering building five stories on that, on that piece of property that will totally change that neighborhood. So I'm looking forward to more information this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Daniel Wacha. I apologize if that's not how you pronounce it. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
This is Daniel Walker. My address is 18 Undercliffe Terrace South. I'd like to start by thanking council members Matute Brown and Rutherford for their time on Sunday to discuss the Rock Spring development options. I think everyone at that meeting appreciated your insight into this whole process and your candor about, you know, where this could go. In the most part, I'd like to echo Anthony and Ms. Girton's points they mentioned earlier. I am against the residential development. That was discussed on Sunday. And in that meeting, a lot of, a lot of residents discussed sort of the local plans and how each iteration of the proposal would affect them. So I think across the board, there is going to be no perfect solution. But I think the larger issue that came out during the meeting is that there's a clear lack of transparency in how this was, you know, published to the entire community. And then the lack of a system in terms of how we got to this point and how we will proceed. So my question to the three other council members, McCartney, Williams and Castelino, what are your opinions of the current proposal? What are your opinions of how this plan came to fruition? And how will the entire council ensure that the decision makers, which I'm assuming is the mayor at this point, includes all communities in the entire process from the RFP stage and the proposal stage to the final decision, considering that it took a yes vote from the community to purchase the land? So again, thanks for your time. Take care.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Lisa Britton. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, I'm Lisa Britton, 71 Burnett Terrace. I too would like to reinforce the earlier comments that were made and to encourage the town council and the mayor to move forward with forming a residence committee to represent community members on development issues in our township, such that we are not presented with a face to complete that fails to engage the wants and needs and likes and dislikes of the community and engage them in the process from the outset. Also like to advocate against residential development at the Rock Spring property and also ensure that any commercial development be limited to a very small footprint. And perhaps the, the idea of a small boutique hotel and a rooftop restaurant with city views would certainly benefit other people in the community who do not necessarily partake in golf. But they too, who are taxpayers, could enjoy the views and, and food and, and whatever services that hotel might provide. I also would like to advocate for keeping the historical design of the 18-hole golf course because I think that's encouraged enthusiasts from out of state and all over to, to actually bring revenue to our town. And I think we should switch the emphasis on ratables generated to invigorating our downtown and Main Street and create exciting commercial revitalization down there. Perhaps creating a one-way traffic on Main Street and emphasizing pedestrian usage, having the other direction located on a lower, lower street there. And I do think that we should also create a town hall discussion that really contemplates all of the upcoming and current developments in our town so that we can approach the development in a cohesive and interconnected way with specialists who understand the process, the idea of a charrette, the type scenario where community and administration can really discuss what, what the best way forward is. I also want to thank council president Cindy Matute Brown and, and Bill Rutherford for participating in Sunday's meeting. And I would also be very interested to understand the position of the other town council members in relation to Rock Spring and, and also hosting this kind of conversation. I, I think that we could all benefit very strongly from, from having discussions in advance of proposals being put forward. And thank you all. That's all.
Thank you. And next we have Michaela Bennett. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, it's Michaela Bennett at Old Indian Road. I want to try to cover three topics. Fairview Insurance, the cost of crossing guards and 555 Northfield. So I'll dive right into Fairview Insurance. Councilwomen Williams and Castellino directly benefited from the campaign contributions from Fairview Insurance. All the shiny flyers we received during election season were directly paid for by Fairview Money. Since you directly benefited from Fairview Insurance, you should recuse yourself because there is an obvious conflict of interest in making decisions about contracts for contributors to your campaign. Why has Fairview Insurance enjoyed such a windfall of contracts from West Orange? Why haven't we competitively bid that contract ever? We've competitively bid it this time? Come on. Why haven't we ever done what's best for the taxpayers and bid the business out? What is so special about Fairview that they get to name their price without competition? That's not how we get the best value. That's how politicians award their friends and financiers. Minimally, like the mayor has done, those of you who receive monetary or in-kind benefits should either recuse from any part of the transactions or state why you have no conflict before you undoubtedly will vote in favor of their well-paid for contract. Fairview, the Grams, fund many campaign contributions in order to enjoy playing with a no-bid contract and windfall of our business. That's precisely what pay-to-play laws exist to address so that there's no appearance of impropriety. Those of you council members who accepted contributions from the Grams of Fairview Insurance should minimally openly state that and either recuse yourselves or say how you've navigated the obvious conflict of interest. Raise, the next thing I'd like to do is raise concerns with you about the plans of the schools and the Board of Ed to balance the budget on the backs of our children. Our son carries two backpacks quite often to school and his saxophone. We live 2.4 miles from the high school where he'll be starting in the fall. As a result of the Board of Ed's plan, rather than cross the street, he'll now need to walk down the street to Pleasant Valley Way and walk along Pleasant Valley Way from Kessler across Mount Pleasant, past all of the 280 ramps and along roads that are mostly without sidewalks, filled with hills and speeders. I'd like to thank Mr. Lapore and the West Orange Police Department for doing a speed study along Old Indian Road. Their findings were that 85% of the 6,000 vehicles that pass our home on a daily basis do so at more than 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. We have no sidewalks, nothing to calm traffic. Vehicles pass often at 50 to 65 miles an hour down the street. And now, rather than merely needing to cross our street under those conditions to wait at a bus stop, our son will, like many other 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 and 18-year-olds in our community, need to walk nearly two and a half miles and arrive before school starts. Nearly an hour walk, sometimes with two heavy bags and often with the saxophone in his hands. That's wholly unacceptable. Although the mayor says that's neither his nor your concern, I reject that. The school budget and the town budget are interdependent and there's no better example of that, sorry about that, than right here. My questions to you all are, sorry for the background. How much does a crossing guard cost the township? From, it's also from the police budget, correct? There are 25 treacherous intersections that will now need safety adults. What budget will that come from? When the schools slash buses from their budget, you'll need to add expenditures to yours. But more importantly, the safety of our children at 6:00 AM through 6:00 PM and sometimes even later should be everyone's priority, but especially the concern of our leadership. So I hope you'll become educated and involved in this issue that we now all must grapple with. Hopefully you'll agree that this is an important town issue despite the mayor's suggestion to the contrary. Lastly, in 35 seconds, 555 Northfield Avenue. Has the deed been corrected? At the end of July, a deed was prepared by a licensed professional, reviewed and approved by a licensed professional and filed by a title company with licensed professionals. Somehow, all of those very capable professionals missed an error, using air quotes, that deeded the entire property to the township at precisely the same time that it was starting construction. So all of the workers building on that new construction site, who's responsible if they get injured? It's been more than a month that this, quote, "error" was realized. What has been done to correct it? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Gary Van Wick. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. It's Gary Van Wick, Burnett Terrace, West Orange. I would like to second the comments made by several previous speakers calling for a charrette process to be undertaken in West Orange so that we can properly examine as a community in discussion the competing wants and needs for different development nodes within our town. We have downtown, we have the valley, we have Northfield, we have Executive Drive, and we have Rock Spring. These all have very different demands, very different challenges. And I think that we need a much broader process of community engagement and discussion, including the incorporation of diverse experts to consider as a town, what is going to be the best way to move forward in the different areas. I know that we have a master plan. I have read it. It's pretty outdated and it does need to be discussed with the entire community, not just turned over to a firm that essentially works for West Orange. This process needs really, in my opinion, to be opened up. And the only real way to do that is with a charrette procedure, which is endorsed by the American Institute of Architects, has been used by our neighbors in South Orange to very good effect and is really the way to plan our community. The way that our town looks and functions is, in my opinion, at least 100 years out of date. The traffic on Main Street is absolutely appalling. The parking is useless. There are electricity lines all over the place and the place is a complete unattractive mess. If you compare it to somewhere like Maplewood, where you drive up, all the lines are buried. The shops are all opening onto the street. There's ample parking. It's safe, it's attractive. Really, we have a long way to go and we need expertise. It's not enough for this process to be driven by the mayor and the legal team behind doors coming to town council and the public every once in a while to present a plan or a proposal and get a thumbs up or a thumbs down. That is not rational development. So I hope that we can project ourselves into the 21st century and really get moving on this with a proper charrette. I'm also very concerned about the Safe Streets Initiative, particularly now that it looks like many of the children in the community will have to be walking a long way to school. It's not going to affect me personally, but that, of course, is completely immaterial. We have had a Safe Street study and I would like the council liaison to explain to us why that has not been implemented and why the DPW has not installed safe sidewalks on every single sidewalk on which a child within 2.5 miles will now have to walk. Furthermore, we regularly have the county executive's representative come and attend town council. And that's great to get news from, you know, Joey DiVincenzo in town council. But what we really need is for town council to use its influence and its, its access to the county executive to finally get it done and make sure that every single county street on which our kids are going to have to walk that 2.5 miles is a safe sidewalk. This is long overdue. It's also completely 19th century. We need to get up to speed here and we need to use our avenues of influence to get the county executive to work with us on this. Finally, I would also like the liaison concerned with our town streets to explain to me exactly how it was decided to place six or seven rather large speed bumps between Burnett Terrace and Northfield. They're there now and it's a fait accompli. And Mr. Lapore evidently decided on his own reconnaissance to put them there. But I would like to know the precise procedure that was engaged. Why this many bumps? Why this high? Why not half as many? And that again is a process on which I, and I know my neighbors, were never consulted. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Leana DeChico. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. If you can give us your name and address for the record and follow the prompt on the screen.
Yeah, no, you got it. Leana DeChico at Undercliffe Terrace South. So thank you, town council, for the opportunity to speak today. Hope you're all having a good week so far. Really just wanted to echo a lot of my neighbors' concerns and comments in regards to Rock Spring. I would really like to see a form of a formal community committee that could act as a liaison between residency administration and town council. This is a decision that is being made with town funds. It impacts the residents. I think they should play a role in providing feedback to the council directly and to the administration. So I'd really like to see if that's something that we can get going. I echo the need for a town hall. It would be great to have an open forum where we can kind of ask questions, have those answered and see what the overall vision and goal is for the development that's taking place throughout West Orange, obviously including Rock Spring. And when it comes to the, the, the development of Rock, Rock Spring or the subdivision, I just want to stress the importance of community benefit. Right now, what we're seeing in the proposal is, you know, benefit for golf. There's development, but there's no mention or talk of anything that's going to benefit the non-golfing community. And from what we know so far in regards to the financials, golf is doing pretty well. I don't, obviously, we can't predict the future. But if it's doing well, if it's making up the revenue, why are, you know, why is there a need for development in the first place? I think that's a, that's a good question. It's a good place to start. Is being done in the future. You know, we can't undo it. So it would be good together, took the time to come up with a formulated plan and were able to move forward with something that could, you know, really leave a, a legacy for West Orange. With that being said, thank you again for your time. And yeah, interested, oh, one last thing. I would really love to hear also where the other members of the town council stand in terms of where, of the development idea of plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Maria Vera. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Maria Vera. I'm president of West Orange for 35 years. I live in 143 Main Street. I was listening to all the, you know, opinions and I really agree with all of them. And I'm against the planned development of this, you know, community. I live right across from the, you know, the new buildings. Most of the units are empty. The bottom of the, you know, the new building's construction is empty. I don't see no point to construct more units when we have planned I don't see no point to construct more units when we have plenty of space in here. Then something else is like, you know, the parking spot. They don't pay the, you know, the parking space in the building. They are using the space outside. So neighbors who live in the community, we don't have no place to park. I live in my daughter's house, and she has three apartments. I live in the second floor. So she has the parking space, but I don't have a parking space. Most of the time I pay fines because when I arrive late from work, I don't have no place to park. Definitely, I really opposed to the, you know, the planned development about this construction of new apartments. And, you know, it's like, I'd like to see more space where the children of the community can, you know, enjoy. Something like, we really like to walk around the community and enjoy seeing how the community is growing. Basically, you know, with new apartments, we are not going to see anything new because, you know, it's apartment, building apartments all over the place in West Orange. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry I didn't say good evening to all, you know, the council president and all the members of the, you know, council members. It was a pleasure, and, you know, I say, I have part of my, it's all, you know, it's my fault also because I was not following the town council meetings. But now, you know, it's with this, definitely I will be joining most of the time every month. Thank you for the time. Thank you for listening. And I really, you know, I hope we can get a solution to this point. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. And next we have Joe Krokoviac. If you could follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Joe Krokoviac, Grandview Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm thrilled at the many calls and demands for increased transparency and more citizens' input and participation in the decision-making process in this town. I wholeheartedly support these sentiments and urge the council members to make this happen, which they most certainly have the authority to do. Crestmont is just the latest and clearest example of the lack of transparency. The mayor announces the agreement on his Facebook page, but absolutely no other information. But I'll bet the Crestmont members, who will be voting on this proposal, will have a lot more information than that. So why can't residents have at least the same information that they have? The council members are in the driver's seat on these issues. Town government cannot pass on any proposal without a majority of council members. And many unfortunate aspects of municipal government happen when council members don't ask the right questions, don't challenge administration proposals, and don't vote against proposals, clearly not in the best interest of the town. I respectfully ask that each council member tonight give their opinion on the calls for much more transparency and much more resident input. And if they say they support more transparency and citizen input, tell us exactly how they plan to provide that. I also heard a lot of opposition to more residential development. I totally agree. With regard to the insurance contract in Fairview, I argued for competition for the insurance advisory contract for the ten years I was on the council and fought to provide transparency on the hundreds of thousands of dollars annually that come with this no-competition contract. No competition for this contract when competition is widespread elsewhere in the state since before the turn of the century. Again, it's the responsibility of the council members to say no more and to seek the benefits of competition and transparency that many other municipalities have as policies for the benefit of their residents. I also ask with regard to the contract, why Mayor Perizzi does not appear to be recusing himself from consideration of this contract as he did for several years when I was a council member? The proposed contract does not have the same language on his recusal as previous versions in previous years have. I hope at least one council member will seek an explanation and urge all council members to vote against this proposed contract and move immediately to set up competitive bidding for each line of insurance and service under this contract. I urge residents that spoke tonight to continue to speak at each council meeting and hold council members responsible. And please don't get discouraged. Remember, this is your government, and it's supposed to work for you, not the other way around. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask if anyone else would like to speak. Unfortunately, if you have already spoken tonight, it is limited to one time at the microphone. So if there is anyone else who would like to speak, it's the Raise Your Hand function located at the bottom of your screen. Anastasia Kinsella, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Anastasia Kinsella. I'm at 3 Clonover Road in West Orange in the Gregory section.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to really, I agree with Joe, everything he just said, and many of the citizens, that we want more transparency. We would like more plans. Many people have mentioned a charrette, somebody who's going to come in who works with an architect or a city planner, who really looks at the macro, the whole town, and how a development would affect our town, including what's going on on Main Street and anything that we're looking at on Northfield. And it should ameliorate our taxes. It should benefit our community. And I agree with Joe that the mayor should probably recuse himself. I would like transparency and a little more control and a little more voice, more voice. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is the final call for anyone who'd like to speak using the Raise Your Hand feature. Ms. Worschowski, as I just stated before, that if you have already been at the microphone, there's only, it's limited to one time, so I'm not able to to call on you again. Todd Dubovy, I'm sure that's incorrect. If you can follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record.
I know that that was correct.
Oh, sweet, thanks.
Dubovy, 10 Burnett Terrace. I just want to reiterate a few things that have been said about the Rock Spring development, specifically as it relates to transparency and the process of going through a project like this. What took me aback was hearing that, you know, when the property was first purchased, there was a part of the plan was to sell off parcels, enough parcels to raise a certain amount of capital to pay down and cover the cost of the purchase. And the estimated value that was indicated at the time was about $625,000 an acre for about 11 or 12 acres. Jump to more recently where we hear that a two-acre parcel where the current clubhouse exists was to be sold for roughly half that, $333,000 an acre. I understand that there's been a lot of talk behind the scenes. We haven't been privy to any of that, and that things change, but the fact that that kind of information came out means somebody was considering it. And so we go from $625,000 an acre to $333,000 an acre, on top of which we have to then put in four to five million dollars to build a new clubhouse. Now we've just thrown in two more million into the purchase of the property and the total expenditure for the property. That's going backwards. So it doesn't give me a great deal of confidence in the decision-making that's been taking place up to this point. So I agree wholeheartedly that transparency is essential. But more importantly, the process of determining what to do with the property, that has to be done in a way that also is, it makes sense. So having been in the industry, in the real estate industry, for thirty-plus years, you know, you bring in experts, and I know we don't have a town planner. So if we don't have a town planner, we then hire a third-party land planner to evaluate the property based on where we are willing to give up pieces and develop it if it needs to be, which I think it does from a financial standpoint. And we then hire an appraiser to model out different financial scenarios that, you know, that once we have this information, we'll have several scenarios to choose from, and we'll be able to make informed decisions instead of appearing to be making ad hoc decisions. So I do want to thank Council President Mathieu Brown and I'm sorry, Bill Rutherford as well for the meeting on Sunday. I thought that was very productive. I'd like to understand and hear from the other three council members how they view what's been taking place with Rock Spring. I also will agree with Joe on his comments about Fairview. I think that I've voiced other issues with no-bid contracts, such as the trash and recycling contract that we're now under the hook for for a five-year term, knowing that the total cost went up $800,000 in the first year. So I think I reiterate that and agree wholeheartedly. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have, I think it's Rosalie. I just need to promote you to a panelist listed as West Orange Town Council meeting. Just give me one moment. And I will turn off your camera for you. Okay. Okay, you are now unmuted. If you give us your name and address for the record.
Excuse me, Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road.
Hey, you're all set, Rosary. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sitting here in my kitchen, listening to all of this speechifying going on, all of the people commenting. And I keep repeating how many years I've been here. I'm living in the town fifty-eight years. I got involved in the township when I retired, and that was 1992. I'm very impressed, deeply impressed with all the people who spoke tonight. I know they're all young families. They sound that way. Well, to me, everybody's young at this point, but I'm really not only impressed, I'm encouraged by the fact that these folks who spoke have done their homework, they have the facts, and they have the commitment to get involved, and that's what's really critical. I would only say to all of those who spoke tonight, I agree with everything you've said, and I'm happy that you're getting involved in your community. The only way you can build a community that cares about everybody and cares about what's going on and ensures that the government is working for their benefit. So please keep up what you're doing. You're doing a great job. You're all, as I said, very well-informed. Your subject matter is a really serious one. I mean, these high-rises going up, the overdevelopment. Years ago, we had an organization in town, and when I retired, I joined it was the Neighborhood Coalition. And their effort was to limit overdevelopment. We're not only overdeveloping, but we're building skyscrapers. Where do we, New York City? I moved from Newark in 1963. I don't know if I want to stay here anyway. I fought to age in place, but with what's taking place. And I'm happy, again, all you folks who spoke, keep it up. Make sure that you keep, stay involved and speak at every opportunity you get because you all sound like you've done your homework and you all make a lot of sense. I commend all of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will bring you back over as a attendee. Okay, at this time now, we have Mr. Puglisi. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. I may bounce around a little bit because I do have a lot of things to share with you tonight. So I apologize if my chronology is a little off. First of all, last week, we unveiled an emergency rental assistance program to help renters who were unable to pay their rent during the pandemic or may have some perspective issues moving forward. The information about this is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. And right there in a, there's a red coronavirus information box on the homepage, and there's a link that says Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Our, even though cases continue to drop, we are continuing free testing every Tuesday in Newark and Saturday in Cedar Grove. Again, the testing is free for all Essex County residents, and we encourage people who who need to get a test or just want to be safe and check themselves out to take advantage of that. Our next food distribution will be May 27th and next to Irvington High School in Irvington. That's on Clinton Avenue. That starts at, we advertise it to start at 9:00 AM, but we typically start typically start at 8:30. And that'll probably, that's going to be our, our 50th, excuse me, 53rd week. So we've unfortunately had to eclipse the one-year mark doing this program. It is gratifying to be able to help folks, but it is also a little disheartening to see everyone who comes out and needs help. So we're very grateful that we're able to help these folks. By the end of this month, we are going to be closing our vaccination sites at Sears in Livingston, the Donald Payne School in Newark, and West Caldwell Tech in West Caldwell. That means our only two remaining vaccination sites will be Kmart in West Orange and Essex County College. Currently, if you want to get a Moderna or J&amp;J vaccine, no appointment is necessary. You can walk into either one of those two locations, Kmart and Essex County College, anytime before 2:30, and we'll be able to accommodate you. We, this past, this week, we actually received a, some Pfizer vaccines. If you want a Pfizer vaccine, you do need an appointment. So you do need to go to essexcovid.org or call our call center at 973-877-8456 to make an appointment. That is the only vaccine that's been approved for children ages 12 to 17. However, if you are an adult and you want to get the Pfizer vaccine, you can also register for that. Again, that's only at Kmart and Essex County College. We, this is hot off the press on June 5th, which is a Saturday. We are going to have a vaccination event at Turtleback Zoo from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Anyone who comes in for their first vaccine can get a free, one free admission ticket to Turtleback Zoo. That's good until September. And there's no appointment needed for that. That'll be an all-walk-up event. Restrictions, outdoor restrictions are being loosened. So we are looking at bringing our fireworks displays back to July. Hopefully, I'll have more information on those by your next meeting. And also, our summer concert series will be returning in August and September. We won't have a full, usually we have about thirty-five different dates. It will be a little shorter, but we are going to pack in as many concerts as we can during those two months. And again, more information on that will be coming. And finally, there was a few residents who brought up Safe Streets initiatives. The county has worked in partnership with, with West Orange on a number of street improvements, pedestrian traffic safety improvements, and we stand ready to do that in the future. Really, any kind of changes that the township is requesting, if the township does the warrant studies and provides the necessary resolution or ordinances that are required by the state for these changes, the county is more than willing to oblige and support those and approve them at the county level. And then finally, there was one resident who talked about sidewalks. Unfortunately, sidewalks are the responsibility or the fall under the purview of the homeowners. County right away is only from curb to curb. The only time we ever would improve any sidewalks or do any sidewalks is if The only time we ever would improve any sidewalks or do any sidewalks is if we receive like a a grant from either the federal government or the state that calls for the introduction of sidewalks or the improvement of sidewalks. Most of our road improvements are, like I said, are just curb to curb. But again, if that's something that the township is, you know, wants to pursue, we can definitely have that conversation. Also, coming up in June, we have a, our fishing derby for children up to the age of 15 is returning. We will have one date at South Mountain Recreation Complex, and that information will be forthcoming as well. All that was that is also on our website, which I mentioned before, which is essexcountynj.org. And I wish everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that is all we have for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for the assist in public comment and to all those who participated in this evening's comments. I want to thank Joe Fagan for always keeping us posted with with the events. Looking forward to the Memorial Day celebration. Once again, Ms. Woschowski, I'm going to answer just what applies to me, which is you are asking, how do we reach everyone without a computer? It is certainly a discussion that we actually had on Sunday with the residents on Rock Spring, because we know that not everyone accesses that. So it is, you know, one suggestion is certainly asking the mayor to do a reverse 911 call with respect to putting, you know, notices in the mail. I I think because of technology, we've all moved away from it, but, you know, in in all consideration, not everyone does have that access. So it is a discussion we should have as elected officials with our administration, and and we'll make a note to do so. With respect to us back spraying for mosquitoes and ticks, I will have to get back to you because I I need to ask our Lady Lepora Township Engineer if that is done and if so, when. So with respect to your question about training our police officers for responding to calls for mental health, is our Chief of Police on? Chief, are you on?
I guess he is.
Chief Abbott, can you, can you inform our residents, share about the program and and the successes we've had and just the new updates?
Yes, Council President. So we've had, we've had a number of initiatives. We were the first in the state to have a 24/7 program for people with substance abuse disorders, and it really wasn't unique to opioid disorders. It was available for alcohol, anything. We had a partnership with St. Barnabas for a detox program. We have another partnership with Integrity House for long-term institutionalized rehabilitation programs. And then we also partnered with Mental Health Associates of Essex and Morris, who do a number of things. One, they train our personnel. Two, they review our body cam footage from every call that we have that involves a person who's emotionally challenged or mental health disorder, and they look for ways that we can improve our our response with them. So we're the, the co-responder programs are are not unique to the country, but we're the only one in New Jersey that's doing it. Ours is a pilot program. They look at all the body cam footage, but they don't respond on every call. They do go out on on calls with us. They're on call certain days of the week, and and they're, they'll actually go out with us anytime they're available in addition to their contractual obligation to go out with us. They've been a great partner to work with, as has, you know, Barnabas and Integrity House. So we're looking to expand that program, and, you know, if we can get the second part of this grant we've been working on, we may be able to do it 24/7, and Morris, Mental Health Associates rather, is is optimistic that they can meet that challenge and and do it 24/7 as well. So, you know, I I would, I would put the training in and our policies and procedures in West Orange Police Department up against any any department in the state, you know. I'm very friendly with the recently retired Chief of South Orange. We share ideas all the time, and we did up until his retirement a couple of weeks ago. But, you know, I I think we're, you know, we're ahead of the game when it comes to anybody in New Jersey with what we're doing. We've been doing autism training with our officers for years now, well before the academy's even mandated it for recent recruits. We're always open to any type of, any of our residents that have an expertise in this, and they want to, you know, bring ideas to us or participate in some level of training. We're we're open to that. Can't wait till COVID is over, so we can bring back the Citizens Police Academy and, you know, have some real good interaction with the community.
Thank you so much, Chief, for taking the time. And maybe you can help answer one of the other questions that Ms. Woschowski posed with respect to when are we fixing up the BFW building? I wasn't aware we had one. Can you give some? That maybe, maybe I wrote the question down wrong. I'm sorry if I heard it wrong. I thought she asked with respect to, did any of my council colleagues hear?
Pleasant Valley Way, yes, Council President, the BFW on Pleasant Valley Way.
Okay.
So that's the old.
Oh, okay. Yes, the post.
Yeah, so that that's privately owned. That's from where the Essex troop was, right across from the Armory.
Yeah, yes.
The township doesn't own that. So, you know, I I haven't discussed it with anybody. I'd sure be willing to discuss it with any of any of the people that are involved with it. If there's, you know, something available, any kind of grants, we can talk to our grant writer. If it's fallen into a state of disrepair and it needs to be, then that's certainly something we want to put on our radar screens.
Sure. Thank you. And I'm going to ask Ms. Woschowski to please reach out to you via email for any further questions with respect to the BFW on PBW. Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief, and and I'm very proud of the program and and the response that I, that that the council receives, the the updates and the reports. It certainly gives us a peace of mind that we are going in the right direction with the training for our police officers for the safety of our residents. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. You're welcome. You can see by the the detailed write-ups on each body cam footage that they look at, that they're really paying attention, and it's, you know, it's kind of rewarding to see that there's not very often that they actually recommend anything that, you know, we're, or people are getting better and better and better at this. I always ask people to be mindful that no matter how much training we do, you know, we'll never be mental health experts. We don't have the formal education, the clinical experience and so on that these folks have, but, you know, we believe we can always do better. That's our mantra, and we keep trying.
You certainly demonstrate that, and we all are very grateful for that. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And Ms. Adams, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, with respect to the development on Main Street, I I was recently made aware of that, and I did receive your email. I I do have to look at the plans. I'm not sure if there has been any plans before the zoning board. I would imagine looking or thinking about the location, that there are several variances that any development there would need. So I would imagine that that would have to go before the zoning board, but certainly we'll look into that. It is concerning. That is an area that's very trafficked. If it does go before the zoning board, I just want to remind everyone that the zoning and the planning boards are both quasi-judicial boards, and the council, unfortunately, or fortunately, it is fortunate that we that we cannot have any influence on on their process, as we should not, but very, very much understand the concern. And we'll look into it further to just familiarize myself a little bit better in that regard. I think Virginia had the same concern. To all the residents, I hope the residents of Rock Spring will allow me just to be brief and address all of your questions. We spoke on Sunday, so I don't want to, you know, just be, to speak for the sake of speaking, I do agree and support the need for a town planner. It is something that we have been asking for, and while we do have a a consultant who serves as a director, you know, that's not the same thing, you know. And and I will say that our planning director's firm is is quite capable. However, that's not what what we've retained him to do. I have been asking, I have been pushing. I know Councilwoman Castellino has echoed the same sentiments to the mayor about the need of a planner. Councilman Rutherford, I'm sure, is in that same position. So absolutely think it's vital to have that. And in the, in the alternative, after our meeting on Sunday, I did follow up with an email to the mayor giving him some feedback from from our meeting, and I requested that we consider reaching out to Topography, who is someone I'd spoken to prior to my run, and they serve as in that capacity of a charrette. I think that it would, it is an investment that we need, because we do have a lot of development in different parts of town, and it feels disjointed, right? I I like the big picture, so that when they, the administration presents anything to us, we understand what it is that we are proving and and long-term, what that impact is going to be. So I absolutely support pushing for a town planner, the continued push for a town planner, engaging an organization like Topography. They're right out of North. They assisted South Orange. And certainly think that it's necessary. I know that when when we were looking for the the community support to purchase Rock Spring, the mayor did say that there would be a community organization to to receive feedback and and participate in the process. I do agree that 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 is very necessary to have your voices at the table. Transparency, in 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 my own ways, Council President, this year, things are being done a little bit differently. The mayor, the first time everyone heard the Rock Spring presentation was its first time we as the council heard the presentation, and it was a concept. The mayor did not receive support from the council members. So it wasn't placed on the agenda. I I am happy to say that at least that is happening. We are having those discussions, but I agree that the process itself, before we even got there, it would have benefited all of us to have those discussions. So I do support the the mayor's supporting, and I hope the council members will also support a community committee to start these discussions. Ms. Silvestri, you asked about Resolution 104. And with respect to Fairview, the administration understands that I vote against Fairview all of the time, because I don't appreciate that. It is, unfortunately, a contract that hasn't been put out to bid. It is on the agenda. I will once again vote against it, and I am asking my council colleagues and have asked my council colleagues to please vote no on the contract in order for them to be able to go out or to to more competitive bidding. With respect to the Foresters contract, that is also something that is a challenge to, for us. It is not on the agenda at this time, and we will wait for the discussion from the administration. And I don't have anything else to say on that, because I I can't take a position without understanding what the township's position is. With respect to the dismay of the 95-acre purchase, I think that the intent for the mayor was to share what he probably thought was feel-good feelings or news, if you will, about preserving or the possibility of preserving 95 acres. The, and I did get some questions in in my email with respect to that. While the mayor did say he supported that 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 he was supported by council with respect to the terms, there has been, there has been no settlement of what of the negotiations, and I'll let Councilman Rutherford, who we've asked as the council members to join in those conversations and and keep us updated. But there has been no settlement. The the members, as I understand, have not voted. So when it comes before the council, we would, we will consider what that that possibility is, including all of the nuances of of acquisition. At this time, it is something that is still not before the council. So there isn't anything further to share. However lame some may think it is, we just can't discuss something we don't have information, full details and information about. Um, let's see. I agree with the process. That has to be a little bit different. I'm just trying to make sure that I don't leave anyone's questions out. With respect to the Board of Ed's decision, and I I agree that it is, is it's unfortunate the position that the Board of Education has taken. The mayor is correct in the fact that they are a separate governing body, and we really do not have, you know, any, any, anything or any input, despite the fact that their budget does come from our budget. I I hope that there is an about-face of sorts from the board, so that our children's safety is prioritized over trying to save the taxpayers some some, you know, tax burdens, if you will, but I I agree that that is not, it was not made with all of the information or considerations that should have been had in thinking that our children can walk on Pleasant Valley Way and all the other streets that just don't have sidewalks. It's a dangerous condition, and certainly look forward to any conversations with respect to crossing guards. If if there isn't a different decision made by the Board of Education, I absolutely incumbent upon our our budget, because we do have crossing guards in our police department budget, and that'll be something that, you know, will be discussed once we are, we know where the Board of Ed is on this. Mr. Chico, glad to see you stay involved once again, and I agree with you that the liaison for the community is necessary. And Ms. Vera, hello, good to see you. Same response as I did to our first caller. With respect to the development on Main Street, I just, I don't really have a position on that at this point, because I I don't, I don't have familiarity with that project, but we'll look into it. Mr. Krikorviak, with respect to transparency and the Fairview contract, you and I were colleagues on the dais, and you know that I have voted against and have pushed the administration, but I am one vote, as you were, and certainly appreciated your notes on those as well. Same response to you with respect to Crestmont. There hasn't been anything settled on, so nothing is before council. It is true that council did have, as as you are very well familiar with the process, closed session to to discuss some matters. But none of that has come before council at this time. So I will not discuss that further. And yes, to your point of transparency, we're, we're pushing in that direction. We're having workshops so that the mayor can discuss things that otherwise is has been your experience, has not happened. We do have workshops to discuss and bring your voices to the table. But I would appreciate greater transparency in bidding these contracts up. Oh, and I do want to say, I briefly, when I was going over my notes, and I know that when I reviewed my agenda and the resolution, I I did see where the mayor has recused himself from the Fairview contract, as he always has. It it is, if you look on the first page, it is about the third whereas clause. You know, he has. It's not in defense, but it's just statement of fact that the mayor has recused himself, as he always has in these contracts. And Mr. Puglisi, thank you for always hanging out, waiting for everyone to take their turn, and certainly look forward to being able to partner in any Safe Street processes that we need, but I'll leave that to Councilman Rutherford as the liaison. And that is it for me. Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. Lots to unpack this evening. Mr. Fagan, I want to start with the easy one. Thank you for a great walking tour this weekend. Heard you had a special guest, Governor Cody, come down to to absorb some of the history here in the townships. So thank you for that. And Memorial Day, you mentioned, is May 31st. Hope many of you on the call tonight could come down to honor honor or veterans from years past. Deputy, I want to mention that Ralph Chiello, who has passed, that will be remembered, was also our deputy mayor in the township as well. And also, thank you, Mr. Puglisi in the county as well for the stellar job that you do. A lot of angst this evening. We have a lot going on, a lot going on. COVID's going away. Developers are calling, the phone's ringing, a lot of projects to get done. You know, it's exciting. It's also very frustrating. And we're trying to work on our communication processes and to get information out. So I just want to pack a few things. So I just want to pack a few things if everyone could be patient with me because we have a lot of comments and I appreciate. All, a lot of new voices on this evening, which is great and hopefully we can break this down a little bit. Ms. Worschowski, real quick in regards to downtown, the farmer's market, another easy one. New Jersey dot com it's in and, and media, social media press releases throughout. So we're advertising. As much as we can for outside of West Orange was the question. And as far as the project that we discussed in regards to next to Supreme Bakery, it's a beautification project that is paid for. With grants from our block grant program. So the alleyway that you would take from the parking lot to Main Street. Is what is being beautified. So we're very excited for that being completed in the next couple of weeks. In regards to four, I'm going to take each thing separately. So 410 Main Street. So what developers have been doing, they have been reaching out where they reach out to the mayor. The developers and true full transparency, 410 Main Street had reached out to Ms. Brill. And myself and asked to run this project by us with, with the mayor listening. And we were very honest with the developer. We thought it was very overly ambitious, but there's a process. And the process is this, we make a recommendation for them to, you know. To hold an information seminar with the community. Because they need the community support when you look at a, a project this large. We know there's parking issues. We actually, two years ago, we, we worked with Bethany Church for. Permit parking for that neighborhood there. So we know there's some challenges and we express that. We're very honest, we express, but there's a process. When a developer comes in and buys a piece of property, they have a right to develop their property. And, and they go to, as the council president said, they go to zoning board, they go to the planning board. And that is when your notifications are given to the neighborhoods. And, and you're able to go express how you feel about the project and that's where approvals are either given or denied. We're going one step further. So when we're hearing developer come to us and asking us for support or some input. We're being very honest and we're also asking for them to reach out to the neighborhoods. Which is important, you know, with that, without buy-in and support, I can't see how the zoning and the planning departments. Are, are going to move forward on some of these projects. So there are, there are processes in place. I'm sure Councilwoman McCartney will, will definitely elaborate. On that. So that's 410 Main Street. They did have a meeting. Which I heard was very, was not well attended. It was actually on the night of our downtown alliance meeting. So I couldn't even attend it. So I heard they were going to have another one and that was the last I heard of that, that project. So hopefully they'll be communicating more. Or, or maybe making changes with the project based on some of the input from the community. In regards to Rock Spring. I unfortunately was out of town this weekend and could not attend the neighborhood meeting. And I know so many of you and, and so many have reached out to me. From the very beginning, I was in full support of the community meetings, not so much. This charrette, but more of getting input. And when we, and, and that's what we're doing here. So the mayor had a meeting. A month or so ago that we had it in a workshop setting so we could spend the time to hear. And as council president said, it was the first time we heard of, of an idea for a project was not well received. So what happened next? What happened next? Not the mayor, because the mayor has not reached out to us. He's not ready to move forward any project. The developer reached out actually to the council president because he made some changes in the plan. And wanted to know we'd be interested in hearing them out. And that's, that's part of our job. Our job is to hear. You know, hear, you know, developers out that are interested in approving our properties when we own them, listening. And that's part of our, what I call due diligence and taking our time to listen. Now, you know, you elect us as your officials and. We need to, you know, be informed and know what all the alternatives are. We, we know that neighborhood. We know what the challenges are. And we know how some of the neighbors are divided in supporting different projects. And so we're going to hear everything out. We have not moved forward on anything. Myself and Councilman Rutherford had walked the property last week with the developer to hear him out and to. To listen to the changes in the plan that, that was proposed that night. And there are some more questions and, but we also. Made arrangements for some residents to come listen, not just us. And obviously we invite the whole neighborhood at that point because this is a, this is only part of gathering information. It's, as we call it, it's gathering concepts and looking at different concepts. So we're not that far yet, but unfortunately it does cause angst in the community because who wouldn't? Be freaked out with 300 units built upon Rock Spring. So we definitely understand that, but that's as far as, as it has gotten. Actually, Councilwoman McCartney. And Councilwoman Williams with another member of the community, we were hoping to get in. To, to walk the property and listen to the proposals and that's as far as it got. So things aren't going as far. It's not that we're not being transparent. We're just trying to do our due diligence and of course we, we advocate for community meetings. And, and, and the mayor hasn't even been involved with, with this last walking of the property with the developer. So we're not that far yet. So I don't want everyone to panic that we're going to move forward without you. Because that's not our intent, but part of our job is to gather every bit of information to make well-informed decisions. For our community. And that's what we're going to continue to do. I know that's what I'm going to continue to do. Someone mentioned bring the professionals in. Well, we have professionals. We had a golf architect. Give us a plan on how we can carve out a piece of the property. So we keep the integrity of the course because we want, it's important that we make it this, keep it 18-hole golf course. I say it constantly, well aware of the value, having an avid golfer in my home. And he reminds me constantly. So we want to make sure we keep the integrity of that course, the historical value. The beauty and, and loud and clear, you know, we want a restaurant, we, you know, we want all the amenities. That are, are residents deserve. So we will still continue to move forward that and I will always advocate and I'm sure all of us will always advocate. To listen to our community members, but remember it's our job to listen to anyone that comes knocking. And we have to, to review that. Uh, okay, let me briefly talk, Fairview Insurance, we'll talk about that in a little bit. That was a PAC that sent out a flyer with, with myself on it and that I was not aware of. Still don't have confirmation of who was behind that. Yes, Fairview Insurance does. Participate to that PAC, which was months prior to the election. Also, the NJEA also donates to that same PAC and some other various parties. So I, I never received confirmation. I looked into it and, but we'll get to Fairview when we get to it. Because we did ask for the administration to put it out for bid. So Mr. Gross will have to comment on that when we get to, to it. There were some, before I moved on, on to the school board and I'm going to defer to Councilman Rutherford about Crestmont. And I appreciate his time, taking the time to, to sit in on the meetings for us. And again, we were in negotiations. It was a closed session and I'm sorry, there's some things that aren't shared with the public. That's part of our job. And so when we go into closed session, it stays in closed session until our attorney advises us otherwise. And that is our practices. But there were some comments on that was made about downtown. And you know, a lot of great plans. We're working really hard, as you heard Ms. Brill and we brought in some consultants. There's a, a lot going on. We're very excited to move forward, but you know, downtown restaurants need your support now and the local businesses down there. So there's a lot of comments that sometimes are made. And I was so happy to see the, the amount of participation at the farmer's market. But these local restaurants and businesses need your support now. So please go down and visit them and also be patient. Our restaurants in town and we'll talk about that a little later with the outside cafes that I, I had asked council president to discuss quickly at the end of the meeting. You know, they, they need your support and your patience because a lot of them, although people are out and about with the pandemic. It's hard for them to get their employees back to work because many people unfortunately are, are staying out on unemployment and not coming back to work for them. So we hope, hope, hope you could be patient. Okay, for me, I'm going to move over to comments about the school board real quick. Alright, so I'm, I'm the liaison member to the school board. Also am a former school board member of 10 years. That, that's why my, my colleague supported me for, for that position. And I was just as surprised at everyone else when these cuts were made in this budget. However, I, I'm not going to, you know, pounce on our, our superintendent and the school board. We have a superintendent that's in his second year. We have a business administrator who's in her first year. There's an interim transportation director, the one that was only there for a few years have recently left. You have, let's see, two school board members with two years of experience. You have two school members, board members with one year under their belt and you have one in their first year. There's a lack of institutional knowledge in the district right now. And I'm sure when they go back and they revisit this. They're, they, they will, you know, dig a little deeper and realize some of the decisions that they made. May have to be reversed and it's not our, our job. It is not the job of the pedestrian safety board. It is the job of your school officials and your school board who we elected. And just like with our job, we have to do our due diligence. I think we all have to be patient. And it, it definitely express, you know, express your concerns and as we all will. But they need to, and I'm sure they will work with the chief with our, you know, with our traffic department. And figure this out. So I am confident that they will go back and look at this. And, and do their due diligence and do what we elect them and, and pay them for. So I, I wish them a lot of luck, but you know, former school member, board members are here for them. I had my days where we had to make cuts into the transportation department. You look at various things. There are some other things that may or may not they could look into. And you know, let's, let's, let's give them a little time, folks, because. You know, they, they'll need time to review this. In regards to the cost of crossing guards, yes, you know, we are going to have to pick up that cost. And that's why I had asked, put in a message to Dr. Castone, obviously he was very busy today. So I've not heard back from him other than a quick text, but to ask for a liaison meeting. Because that cost is going to come over our way and we do always try to work together. But let's see what happens there. And the last thing I just want to touch upon real quick, I know for the sake of time. But someone mentioned about transparency, garbage contract and, and I always, I have to say this because we worked. We were diligent when we worked on the sanitation contract. We even. Went out to bid with the school board to try to get a better rate. We had a whole committee that worked together. Spent a lot of time, but at the end of the day, a couple of years back, trying to stop taking our recycling. And when they did, it not only cost us a fortune, but everyone throughout the state and the country. We have a few, you have a few challenges with that contract. And one is there are not many vendors that can handle the scope of service that we require here in the township. We have our topography, which causes a lot of maintenance. You know, going up and down the hills. I know I'm always having to get brake jobs done for my vehicles. We try to be environmentally friendly. We have 27 private communities that we are passed through that we have to still supply and put in that bid. The bid for the sanitation contract is this thick, that thick folks. And we'll see it again next year when it comes up, but we could discuss that then. And we did, we did it town right by getting a five-year contract and locked in when we did because it keeps increasing exponentially. So that's all I'm going to say about that. And thank you, council president, my colleagues for indulging me for the time I took. This evening. And thank you, public, everyone for coming out.
Thank you. What, before you, before, since you sat on that committee, can you just briefly talk about the, I, I recalled when you mentioned. The committee with respect to the natural gas that is, that, that was put in the RFP versus diesel. Can you just talk about the benefit of natural gas versus the diesel?
Well, that was for it to be environmentally more friendly. And, and that was the reason that was discussed at that time. But when we, we go back. You know, we're going to put the same, we'll put that committee together again with the health department, the school officials too. Because we actually, one of the things we try to get, for years, we tried to get the school contracts lined up with our contract. And they were off. And when Superintendent Rusk was there, we, we lined them up. So this way, but unfortunately with all that effort. You know, it's, it's a large scope of work and not a lot of the companies could handle the, that magnitude. So that was one of the issues at that time. Times could change with the next contract.
Thank you for, for that historical perspective on, on the committee. Councilwoman McCartney, please.
Yes, good evening, Council President. Thank you. And, and thank you also for your summation of everyone's comments this evening. I do appreciate them. Councilwoman Catalina also touched. Upon everyone's comments as well. I wanted to, let me just start with the thank you to Joe Fagan. I really love the hometown heroes banners. And the reminder for Memorial Day. Joe, thank you for that. And for Anthony Puglisi, again, always commending them for the work that the county is doing. And, and bringing up that comment about pedestrian safety. Because Nancy Worschowski made a comment about safe streets and the pedestrian safety commission over the past. I think it's only been three years, have made tremendous strides in tackling different aspects in town. To concentrate on pedestrian safety. If it's not reducing speed limits or stop signs, various different things in town. And the county engineers, the township engineers, even the professionals that serve on the commission. Are on the pedestrian safety commission, are traffic engineers. There are planners, two planners on there and plus the community that is so actively involved. Which is what I appreciated tonight and I wanted to, like this overarching. Comment about transparency and having the charrette. So we heard that word a couple of times and Jacqueline Hendy said that it was a new word for her. I first heard of that word back in 2013 when the Open Space Commission. Was considering purchasing six acres on Mount Pleasant Avenue. And they started having town hall charrette. And it's actually, well, Bill Sullivan is a commissioner on the Open Space Commission. He brought that to everyone's attention. We did not know what that was and it turned out in town hall, we did meet and discussed. The landscape architecture, what was going to happen there. We applied for grants. So we're trying to use that same analogy, but what's happening now, and maybe it's because of COVID. Council President, I do want to commend you though for having the workshops and the presentations. I guess that's what we can call a town hall now. During COVID, hopefully that will change soon. What we're seeing now are these conceptual plans. And just now, what we're hearing this evening, Crestmont presented a conceptual plan to their neighborhood. It seemed it was presented as if it was a done deal. Essex House did a conceptual plan at St. Cloud. Again, it was presented as if this was, this is what was going to happen. The same thing at the Rock Spring Golf Club. The same thing at the Rock Spring Golf Club. When the mayor started that presentation a few months ago, what he, what we all knew and even the residents there, what everyone knows is that when it was privately owned, we were generating five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in tax revenue and that was gone. So everyone, the original plan when we purchased the twelve acres was that we knew we were going to carve something out of there. We didn't know what, but we knew we were going to carve between five or ten acres out to recoup that tax revenue in order to submit a plan to Green Acres for the funding to preserve the rest of it as a golf course. When the mayor presented that workshop to us, he started off by saying that he had a steady stream of investors coming in that wanted pilots and he would not agree to that. The one that he presented was without a pilot. And again, it was the first time we all heard about it. It was his attempt of sharing that with the community, sharing that with the council. And it is not a done deal. I am sorry, I didn't know about the the meeting that was held at Rock Spring on Sunday. I would have liked to have attended to speak to the residents. I know I have shared emails with many of them. We're always open, accessible, so I do like to hear from residents. Even thinking back on that presentation, all of us as council members were a little stunned at what had been presented. But again, it was another conceptual plan. It's still not a done deal. We talk about all the amenities. We do want to see more amenities for the non-golfers. That was a term I heard this evening to the non-golfers. We do want to see more amenities. The converse is that is the investor. Yes, we can present these plans and this may go back to putting it out to bid and see if we put all our ideas together and if some, if that can be done. We need that, we need the investor to do that. And what the mayor was sharing with us was this particular investor that was presenting this, again, a conceptual plan. There is, nothing has been voted on. And as you just said, I have not had that tour yet, so I plan on doing that one day next week. And I'm sorry I was not there on Sunday to hear all of these comments that I really do appreciate hearing. When Mr. Nikotera talked about, I like the term premier destination. That's exactly what we want on that site. Someone just shared the Golf Week and highlighting the Rock Spring Golf Club as that historic, amazing site. I appreciate your comments about the Seton Hall University Police Training and Mental Health and Blaustein School because serving on the planning board, that's where we receive our training. And when we were working on the complete streets policy for planning and for pedestrian safety, there was a panel discussion at Blaustein. So I do appreciate those, the comments about that and your willingness to step forward and taking the initiative. As you heard from the police chief, I actually pulled the resolution from our last council meeting. This goes back to Nancy's comments too about the Mental Health Association and the training. And there was a whole resolution that the chief articulated on that we are hoping that program continues. Nancy also made a comment about the, the letter just came today from the Department of Transportation. Sorry if I jumped around, but I happen to have the letter right here that this is for the Washington Street Corridor Improvement Project. This is a common, the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program is through the New Jersey Department of Transportation in partnership with the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and the South Jersey Transportation Planning Association. So the funding, it's federal funding coming to the township. Studies were done on the Washington corridor. And I commend everyone that was involved in that. And the fact that we are about to receive seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to put through that project. I'm sorry, let's see, what else? Nancy said she was going to congratulate me. I thank Councilman Rutherford for that recognition. The organization is only four years old. This is the core, it's an acronym of Core of Rainbow Sisters. They started a fight, Maritza Brown is the chairperson. It's a five oh one C, five oh one C three. And it, this particular event is on Sunday and it is a fundraiser for their financial literacy program for the youth in town. So I helped Maritza Brown initially working on financial literacy, working on the program, and it's a community service achievement award. So thank you for that. The pro, the application that Ms. Adams and Mrs. Merchison and also Ms. Vera on four ten Main Street. I know that that is something that the Downtown Alliance was discussing. That is not an application that has come before planning or zoning. And again, conceptual plan, everyone needs to work that out. It has not been presented to the public. It was, what my understanding is that it was presented to the Downtown Alliance. The library, again, we already commended the Jerry Sweeney commending the library and all the work that they do. I too would like, I think maybe when COVID is over or like I said with the council president doing the workshops and the presentations, that would help bringing the community together. I, and if people do have pedestrian safety concerns, they meet monthly. Environmental Commission meets monthly. All of the things that were discussed tonight, people are always welcome for those open and public meetings. Again, I'm sorry I was not there on Sunday to hear all of these comments. I do appreciate them. Where else? More transparency, council president mentioned about in the body of the resolution on tonight's agenda. The mayor did recuse himself on the Fairview Insurance Policy. I do want to say on that particular resolution that at our last budget hearing, I believe we were, I know we did agree that it would be put out for bid. So I'm hoping the first sentence that says, "Pursuant to the fair and open process for insurance brokers," that will be explained when we get to that. Let's see what else, more notes? And Rosary Morelli, thank you again for your comments always. Always ready to come to the council with any questions or concern. Think, you know, there were comments about Crestmont. Again, the mayor knew that the council was in favor of that. It is still within negotiations, so there really isn't anything left there to discuss. And I think that's all I have. The busing issue, my children are out of the public schools. I did see a lot of this on social media. The superintendent did email the council this evening a letter that was sent to all the parents. It does raise an awful lot of concerns considering we went to a central six a few years ago. We have some children going to Roosevelt, middle school children going to Liberty. And same pedestrian safety concerns. I have the same pedestrian safety concerns. I saw a mother walking with a child and a little boy in a baseball uniform today on Pleasant Valley Way right near Beltar and Pleasant Valley Way. It was that big intersection. And I had no idea where they were going carrying that baseball bat. So it just, it's, it just seemed unsafe to me to see them walking down Pleasant Valley Way. And I guess the question was raised by Mr. Dubo B about determining what to do with that property. That's exactly where we are, trying to determine what to do with Rock Spring Golf Club. So thank you, everyone, for your comments and we have to figure out how to make this more of an open, public conversation and and get investors involved. That, to me, brings us back to bringing all of these ideas together and again, putting out an RFP for a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can. Ms. Woschowski, my comments regarding the busing. I do think it's important that the people in town that have knowledge about the various streets and sidewalks and some of the issues that we face with regard to pedestrian safety being included in the process. And I'm glad that our superintendent has decided to include them. It's not that they will necessarily, the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board will necessarily approve or disapprove of anything, but they certainly do bring a wealth of knowledge, experience and expertise to the conversation that I think can benefit the outcome. With regard to your question on what is the plan doing, what is the town planning to do with the county to make the roads and sidewalks safe? I do believe Mr. Puglisi addressed some of that, but I, I want to just circle back a little bit on that. One of the things that is happening right now, our mayor has already reached out to our county exec. I began speaking with him regarding roadways and sidewalks in January. We didn't put anything out. We're not taking selfies and, you know, doing press releases because there's not enough done to to announce anything yet. But everyone that we've spoken with is in agreement that something has to be done with regard to sidewalks. And so there is an effort there. The mayor has asked the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board to begin prioritizing which streets need sidewalks. And we are expecting to get some help to pay for those out of the infrastructure bill that our current president is considering. That is really the key. How do we pay for it? Everyone wants it. We've got to figure out how do we get it done. And so it looks like the stars are aligning. There should be a massive infrastructure bill coming out hopefully this year, if not certainly next year. And when it does, we want to be first in line to apply for those funds to to improve and upgrade our sidewalks and roadways. Some of the other questions you you asked have already been answered and I won't reiterate them here. With regard to four ten Main Street, I don't know enough about that project to have an opinion. I will say in general, I don't think we need more residential development. I've been saying it since I was campaigning. I've been saying it since I've been on the council. I think we need to focus on commercial ratables, not residential development. So that's just a general stance. I don't really know the particulars of the four ten Main Street plan. I took a brief look on Facebook a moment ago. It does seem to be quite a large building for that size property. But before I can really have an opinion, I have to do a little bit more homework. Rock Spring, several residents spoke out about Rock Spring and I'm grateful for that. They are certainly engaged, organized. I was grateful to be able to attend a community meeting on Sunday with Council President Tu Brown and several of the residents that were concerned about the development on Rock Spring. I will reiterate again, I don't think we need more residential development. I think the concept that has been presented so far puts a monstrosity of a building on the golf course. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate and I do think we can do better. I have been advocating for a resort type project. And so far, we we've not heard or seen any concepts that are consistent with that. But I do think that is the the right direction to go in and I'm encouraged that at least at the presentation the mayor gave several weeks ago, he he at least incorporated some of the feedback that he has received and is listening. And so hopefully we can continue to advocate for a different outcome at Rock Spring. One of the challenges that was brought up at that meeting and it's something that council president has been advocating for during her entire tenure is a town planner. We certainly need someone who is taking a holistic approach to development in town, who can look at how the various parts of town that are being developed or the various projects can be leveraged to help each other, can provide some of the amenities that residents want and need, and can also just take a, a, an overall view as to how these various developments will affect residents, will affect taxes, traffic, safety, so on and so forth. So I echo the sentiments of Council President as well as Councilwoman Castellino. We do need a town planner to act in that stead. Now, we don't, we have a planner, but he does not do that. And we're going to talk about that a little later when we get to his contract. And I do want to thank all of those that spoke up about transparency and engagement, community engagement. It is critical to maintain and increase the trust of the residents that we be fully transparent in what we do as well as offer as many opportunities as possible to engage the community and hear their thoughts. Now, there are some issues that we can't be transparent about. Crestmont is one of them. I'm going to come back to that in a minute. There, there's a time and a place to discuss these things and sometimes, you know, residents want information or receive a piece of information and can't get the entire picture. And that's, you know, for a reason. I'm going to circle back to Crestmont in a, in a minute. But the charrette concept is certainly welcome and I do think that you have support on the council for that kind of a process. Fairview. Yeah, I think Fairview, and I've said this during the campaign, I'm not going to change it now. I think Fairview, because they contributed to the PAC that sent out the flyer to support various candidates in an election. I think that if it, if it certainly was not illegal from my understanding, but I felt like it was distasteful and inappropriate. I don't think any contractor in town should be in the business of advocating for for a particular person or persons who will have to decide on that contract. I think that's in poor taste. I think they should have known better if they did not know better. And as a result, I certainly will not be supporting their contract tonight. Circling back to Fair, to Crestmont. So as the liaison for that, I have sat in all of the meetings and I just want to say a couple of things about that. One, so while we have communicated amongst ourselves, the terms that we are that we presented to the golf course, to Crestmont, and that they then presented to their membership, it is completely possible that Crestmont could come back with a counteroffer or with requests for additional or or some changes to that. So we cannot communicate about that until we have something that is concrete to communicate. So while we are all supportive of the project and believe it is the right thing to preserve ninety-five acres to make sure that it is not going to be developed, that no residential development can ever be there, we still don't have enough agreed upon to communicate to the public yet. Now, Crestmont did meet on Sunday, two days ago, to vote. It was presented to their membership and we have some work to do as a council as a result of that. We're going to do that and as soon as we come to a conclusion, then we can communicate that to the town. And I just hope that you guys will give us the grace we need to get that done. I think it's an important project. And I think it certainly goes a long way toward maintaining the canopy here, the open space, the green spaces that we all enjoy as residents. It's quite a bit of notes for tonight. Couple of things to clean up. One, Mr. Puglisi, I am grateful for what the county has done with regard to their COVID response, in particular, the testing sites and the vaccination sites, but also with food distribution. What he mentioned and he did not provide a lot of detail. I'm sure he's been saying this now for fifty-three weeks. The need for food in Essex County has gone up exponentially. And so they are meeting that need and I'm grateful for that. I just want to let everyone know that there are other food pantries that you can go to as well. Don't just rely on the county. There are others as well. There's one in town, Holy Trinity. You can look them up and see when they are open. and see when they are open, and 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 certainly stop by to get whatever it is they have to offer. If you're willing to travel out of town, Ebenezer Baptist Church, the church where I'm the pastor, we do a food pantry every Thursday. We give away about 20,000 pounds of food every month. It's not just for Orange residents. It's open to anyone that wants to take advantage of the food pantry, and there are others. And there are many churches involved in that program. Some are part of the county. Some work with the Food Bank, the Community Food Bank out of Hillside, and others do it on their own dime. But please, you know, look those up, find out where you can go to get a bag of groceries or two, and make sure that your neighbors that are food insecure have that information as well. And I would be remiss, I meant to do this in the earlier session, but today is Haitian Flag Day. It is an important day, not just in the Haitian community, but in African-American community here as well, because it is the day that has been set aside to celebrate the adoption of the Haitian flag back in 1803 as a result of their fight for liberation from France, where they freed themselves from the colonial oppressive rule of France. They've been paying the price for it ever since. Haiti has been starved of resources ever since for having the audacity to fight for their own freedom. But I am grateful for that, and I'm grateful for this day as well, because their fight for liberation inspired many freedom fighters right here in America, former slaves who were fighting for their liberation as well. So May 18th, every single year, it's Haitian Flag Day. Just wanted to make sure I let everybody know that. Thank you for indulging me, Council President. That's it for me.
Thank you for bringing that up. I I'm always very proud of the the first revolt, right, of of those who were the smaller population and those enslaved that were able to, you know, lead us into freedom as well. Thank you for that. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. And so as always, I have the pleasure of not reiterating many of the comments that have already been made by my council colleagues. So there were a couple of questions that were specific to some of the liaison appointments that I have, and so we'll start with acknowledging the locations that are pending property designations as historic designation. So first, we have Holy Trinity Episcopal Church at 315 Main Street. We have the Williams McManus Lehman House at 122 Main Street. We have Hedges Block 56 Main Street, which is the hardware store. We have the State Designer at 567 South Valley Road and the George V. Hecker Carriage House at 36 Ridge Road. Those are the property locations that will come to some type of public opportunity for commentary and discussion before those proceed to be actually designated as historic designations. Next, that came to me specifically was the purpose of the Rent Leveling Board and how information can be found and where it is. So if you go to westorange.org, which is our township website, and just go to Rent Leveling Board, that website has been updated with information on tenants' rights, New Jersey's security deposit laws, West Orange ordinance on rent control, the ordinance amending rent control, the Executive Order 106, which basically has a moratorium on evictions, and again, information on the rent leveling board. Again, I will just comment that the Rent Leveling Board assists landlords and tenants to comply with all the provisions of Chapter 15 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange and the New Jersey statutes regarding rent, rent control and the impact of rent in the township of West Orange and the state of New Jersey. Our function primarily is to conduct terrains and mediation of tenant and landlord petitions regarding the adjustment of rents under the township's rent levelling laws. I will just continue again to reiterate that while that commission has been on our books for many, many years, it has not met, we have not had issues or concerns brought to our attention. We are currently in the process of revising the functionality of that commission. We do know that the moratorium on evictions will be lifted very much sooner than later, and when that does happen, we want to be a resource for residents in our community, both landlords and tenants, so that we can amicably manage that process. We don't want people in West Orange to be displaced without some type of consideration, but at the same time, we know that landlords have had to endure, based on this moratorium, the inability to collect rents since March of 2020. At that same time, they have still been mandated to pay mortgages on the properties that they own. And while we do have 30% of our residents who are renters in West Orange, again, we do not want to put an unnecessary burden on either party, and so that is the purpose of the Rent Leveling Board, and while we are looking forward to making sure we are able to function once that need arises. Again, I'd like to thank all of our residents for taking an opportunity to come so that your voices can be heard, so that we can continue to meet your needs and address your concerns. I will continue to reiterate, just as Council President and Councilwoman Rutherford held a community meeting regarding Rock Spring, that each of us in our own, you know, we may continue to reach out, whether it be via newsletter, whether it be community meetings, whether it be community events that we host. It is all of our desires as council representatives for the Township of West Orange to be able to respond to your needs. So, you know, when we are out here advocating for you, trying to get your, your answers, your, your questions answered, it is no intent of ours to be private, to not divulge information and/or to be non-transparent. As a new council member, I ran on the platform of bringing more transparency to our government and holding our government accountable. So I think you've heard each of us this evening talk about that intent. However, you know, we are a governing body that runs under the Faulkner process. And so our mayor does all of the negotiations in our community. And then, once those negotiations have been finalized, that information is brought to the governing body, which is your council, which is each five of us, and then we deliberate, we make decisions, and we take into consideration the opinions of the public. That is why we appreciate when you come with us every two weeks and take the time that we have on these calls. Right now, obviously, we're not in person because of COVID, but we appreciate your outreach. We appreciate your input, and it is, it is, that is what this process involves. So again, thank you all for, for coming, letting your voices be heard. Again, as far as Fairview is concerned, I, I, I am a newly elected official. I had no idea that I was going to appear and be endorsed by a PAC. And so certainly, I appreciate the endorsement. I was endorsed by several different organizations, and and I, I don't deny that that probably helped me get elected. It's a very expensive endeavor to run for public office. However, I do not concede that that blemishes my judgment and/or the opportunity for me to make a decision moving forward. What I would like and what I do encourage, as my council colleagues have all stated this evening, is that we have more transparency, is that we have more open bidding. So I again concur with all of those sentiments that we would like to see open bidding. However, as this contract stipulates, it was an open and fair process. I did reach out to our township attorney and ask, what does that mean? My understanding is that means it was put out to the public. So there again, tho- those are the answers that I have received. There, there is an effort to be, to be completely transparent, to do the bidding of the people. Again, we only know as much as we know. You have the same information and access to the information as we do. All of our information is posted on Thursday. The packets are given to us on Thursday preceding Township Council meeting. So with that being said, there's no information that is hitting, hidden. There's no information that I have access to that you don't have access to, and so with that being said, we would appreciate your, your trust and confidence in the people that you have elected to serve for the Township of West Orange. Again, you know, most of the comments are the same comments that I would just continue to repeat. Again, that's the benefit of having my last name be Williams. So I, I apologize if I haven't answered any of the other commentary more directly, but I do thank each and every one of my constituents for attending, making sure you're heard, and I ask that you, you know, if you have any questions or any comments that I have not answered directly, I can be reached directly at twilliams@westorange.org. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I neglected to address one of the issues that I think is important. One of the residents asked about the traffic control measures on Walker Road headed toward Northfield Avenue, and I know Mr. Lepore, or I believe Mr. Lepore, yes, our engineer is on the call, and they wanted to understand how we got to that process. Is it okay if he has an opportunity to come walk us through?
Absolutely, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lepore, are you on?
Yes, I am in, in audio only.
Okay, that, that's fine. Thank you. Can you, can you answer the, the resident's question with respect to Walker Road and how that determination was made to put the speed bumps, right? Was it just the speed bumps, Councilman? Yes, the speed bumps on Walker.
Yeah, well, we, last year, and it's, it's been right around a year ago, we implemented another, a, a, a number of traffic calming measures on Walker Road between Gregory Avenue and Northfield Avenue. We implemented some all-way stops. We have flashing speed limit signs. We have flashing curb signs. We have flashing stop signs in addition to the traffic calming speed tables. Once we decided that we were going to put all-way stops at Walker Road at Upper Burnett, in Walker Road at Lower Burnett, certainly wanted to make sure that motorists were doing the speed limit as they traveled to and from that section of roadway. Consequently, there are a, a number of speed tables along the golf course for the sole purpose of making sure that motorists stay within the 25 mile per hour speed limit as they're traveling along the golf course. It's been an area where we've received a number of complaints of speeding, and and that was verified by having stat trackers which record vehicle speed as well as vehi- vehicular volume in, in that area. And I think it's been very effective. I think part of our thinking also was now that we are the owners of a public golf course, we wanted to make sure that those golf car crossings were as safe as they could be by making sure that we had motorists do the speed limit. Similarly, moving away from the golf course, we put speed tables at and near Northfield Avenue. That's been an area of complaints that we've received where motorists want to rush to try to get through the green light. And then at the other end of, of the project study area down near Gregory Avenue, we put some speed tables alongside the Gregory School, again, in an effort to slow traffic down as it approaches that traffic signal as well as the school crossings that are both at Lowell Avenue and Gregory Avenue. Most of the speed tables are about four and a quarter, four and a half inches high. That does a very good job of keeping most vehicles from going over the 25 mile an hour speed limit, and they're spaced at a distance where most motorists aren't going to go about trying to speed up in between them. So it helps keep people, once they get to the first, not trying to gun it to go faster before they get to the next one. So that was a lot of the, the processes, and it wasn't just speed tables. It was part of a, an overall plan for traffic calming in that neighborhood.
Thank you so very much for that detailed explanation, Mr. Lepore, and Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. And since we have Mr. Lepore's attention, even though he is on vacation, I appreciate him attending this meeting. Mr. Lepore, one of the residents had asked about the, I was trying to go through our agendas. It seemed to me that we did have a resolution about correcting the easement at 555 Northfield.
I, I don't know if, if it needed any resolution or action by the, by the governing body. But Ms. Bennett is correct. Approximately two months ago, when this was pointed out to us, we did some quick research and quickly found out an error was made by the title company in the filing of, of a deed of easement. And the applicant's attorney for that project, Robert Williams, was contacted. As of now, I do not know anything further as to whether a corrective deed was filed.
I can give you an update on that, Mr. Lepore. I did reach out at the Council President's request and did confirm that the corrective deed has been sent to the county, and that due to COVID, it's a little more arduous process, but it should, it was sent out three weeks ago, right around the time that the error was discovered, and it should have already been recorded, but certainly will be available to the public, and we'll get a copy of it as soon as it is.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. And just, just to follow up and provide a little further clarity on that, because I did reach out to the administration, to Mr. Trank, and I, and also to our CFO, because the, the I, I don't know if it's an innuendo, but what was intended to be understood was that the the owners, or the, the, the new owners who are developing the property did not pay taxes on the property. I, I'm going to encourage everyone to, and I, I see that we have a, a nice new Muni Index, which is where you can look up your taxes by, now it's either address, block number. But you can see, if you type in the address for 555 Northfield Avenue, the taxes have been continued to be paid in that, for that property. And I've also shared a historic, because I asked the Chief Financial Officer to please give me a historic look back on all of the payments since the time of purchase, and, and they have been paid. And I will also say that with respect to the deed, if you look on the county's website and you look up the block number and the lot number, which is, I'm missing it here, but it's 120, 168 and 26, you'll, you can see an image of the deed that was filed. The deed specifically reads deed of easement. So it wasn't a deed for the entire property. It clearly designates the easement and, and what measures out, you know, with with specificity what the deed is for. So most of the time, and I know lay, laypeople may not understand that when there is a filing with the court, there is a, a cover sheet, if you will, or a CSI, a case information statement that is filed, and it is there where the check off the mistake it was, was made. But all that information is public on the county's website. And once the county is able to fix it, it is updated in our Muni Index as well. So thank you for bringing that up. Councilwoman McCartney, I forgot to, to address that. So I certainly appreciate the opportunity to do so.
And, and just to add to the Council President's comment, the concept that an owner of property who has a multimillion dollar project with financing would give that property and deed it to the town, and that that would ever be valid in light of the mortgagees' interest is just, it is such a clear-cut inadvertent error, and as Councilwoman Castellino indicated, title companies send descriptions, they are attachments, they are then stapled to the deeds, and as you correctly stated, Council President, it's a deed of easement. It was not a conveyance document concerning fee simple title. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. And seeing as now- And seeing as now our public comments session has taken us this long, I certainly appreciate my colleagues' responses and deliberation on what has been presented to us by the public. So I will ask Madam Clerk to please, let's move down the agenda.
Okay, so consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, May 4, 2021, public meeting and executive session.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, Madam President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes, I am going to pull Resolution Item G, which is 104-21, the Fairview Insurance Contract. I am going to also pull Item S, Resolution 116, which is the professional service agreement for Mr. Greigle, who is our consultant and planning director. And I had questions on others. And let's see, well, not questions, but I did want to just clarify for both my council colleagues, I know that you've had the opportunity to review the agenda and hopefully you've had the opportunity to also look at your emails. I contacted our legal department as well as our mayor this morning because of Item P, the Resolution 113-21, and Item Q, Resolution 114-21, with respect to bond council and redevelopment council. I recognize that one of their, I don't know if he's a principal, but he certainly is with the firm. And also a resident here in West Orange also was a member of the planning board, which obviously can present a conflict of interest. And that was remedied, the legal department as well as our mayor did say that they did have that conversation. He was going to resign and he has effectively resigned. I want to say very specifically and clearly that Mr. Everett Johnson is no longer a member of the planning board. He is a resident in town, someone who I respect. I think he's very, obviously learned in the areas of bond and redevelopment. But also I appreciate that he is invested in the township. He lives here, his children are in school. My only concern was that it may have presented some conflict of interest. That conflict of interest has now been removed. So I just wanted to clarify that, both for my council colleagues and for the public, to just ensure that there is no conflict of interest in that manner. And I, say again, I'm sorry? Oh, okay. I didn't have any other questions. Did any of my council colleagues have questions or want anything pulled? Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm good with the items pulled. I just have quick comments on Y, Z, and I want Mr. Lepore to explain double A to the council.
Y, Z, and double A, okay. Did you have questions on Y?
Just, just a quick comment. And, you know, great, we're looking at working on Lafayette Playground with Kathryn Capora. And we appreciate all the hard work by Mr. Keough, so that's great news. Another facility of ours being, looking to get upgraded with grant money. And I just want to congratulate and note to Mr. Keough and our Recreation Department and Mr. Lepore for completion of Deignan Park. It looks beautiful and congratulations. And I hope we have a ribbon cutting there sometime soon. With that on Z, I just want to quickly mention, I'm very happy to see F&amp;B Catering to be at the concession stand at Ginny Duncan Pool. Their food is fabulous. And so anyone attending the pool this summer, if, don't bring your lunch, you'll definitely enjoy the concession stand this year. But if Mr. Lepore could just indulge us with double A, I appreciate it.
Mr. Lepore?
The fire stations.
Mr. Lepore, maybe you stepped away for a moment.
Well, I'm back. I put my microphone on mute, I apologize.
That's okay.
We did take bids last month on renovations to Fire Station 1 and Fire Headquarters, both located at 415 Valley Road. There seemed to have been some misunderstanding of how the bid was to be put together by the two lowest bidders. We'd had base bids, we had some alternate bids. They just made mistakes in compiling their numbers. And if we were to just reject them and take the third lowest bidder, we'd be spending a couple hundred thousand dollars more. So my recommendation is that we reject all the bids. We are in the process of revising the bid documents to eliminate that confusion. So there'll be no alternate bids. Now that we know about where the numbers are, we're comfortable that we have sufficient funds to award the project and not have to worry about whether we can afford an alternate. So I'm asking that we reject the bids and that you authorize us to re-advertise. And we're ready to re-advertise and start selling these bid documents next Monday, taking bids in mid-June, and hopefully have a recommendation for June 22.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Council President, I wanted to also thank Mr. Lepore for the cover letter explaining the decision to do that. We have waited so long for that work to get done. But this does make so much sense to go in that direction. And also on Resolution Z, I also had that circled, that if you ever need an incentive to join the pool, F&amp;B Fine Catering would be a great incentive also. Thank you.
Thank you. Did any of my council colleagues have any other questions or any items they needed pulled? Okay, thank you. I just do, I do have another question, Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross or Mr. Trank, this is for you. 119-21, can you just, it is a rebate, tax rebate to the listed taxpayer. Can you just verify that that is, that was a court, that was a judgment and not a settlement? Or was it a settlement? I don't know who's going to answer that.
I will have to get back to you on that. I don't know whether, most of the time they're settlements, but I will have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I wanted to also understand how the difference was reached. And I know, I know that because this is pursuant to a final judgment by the court, it's not really a choice whether or not we accept it. It's something that the court mandates. But I did want to understand how that reduction was met. So if you could follow up at a later time, I'd really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Gross. Oh, and also for my council colleagues, some of you I did have the time to speak to in advance. But just to circle everyone in, I've asked our legal department, I've also mentioned to Mr. Gross that I would like to see a standard in how we are using language in our contract with specificity to any ancillary payments in addition to, including traveling, mileage, et cetera. There are some that include that language. And I realize that some need that language, but I just want to understand what the process in doing that is. So I just, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention as well. And that is it for me. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. So I missed Councilman Rutherford. I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Just on 119-21. So I'm not, if I understand this correctly, we're not, is this a court ordered? Is this ordered by the court or is this a negotiated settlement? I'm not clear on that.
Well, any given situation, the court orders at the end, whether it's an agreed upon and then endorsed by the court, or if it's a court decision. So that's why I don't know the answer to the question, because it is court ordered. But it may, it may very well have been something that was agreed upon and presented to the court. So, and that happens often. So I don't know the answer, but I can find, I will find out.
Mr. Kizer, do you know?
Well, the only thing I know is the court approved it because it indicates where his final judgment on tax appeals has been rendered by the tax court. So, but I'm not sure I could, that definitively answers the question as to whether it's by a settlement or whether there was a trial, a hearing, or whatever. But the court has obviously approved it, or it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have this resolution.
So we don't have a choice? Is that, am I understanding that? No, even if we chose not to accept that, there's nothing we can do about it because it's ordered by the court?
I don't think, I don't think so. There's no choice. I mean, it's adjudicated. Remember that the law favors settlements, so, you know, it encourages settlements. So whether it's by settlement or by judgment after a trial, really doesn't make any difference. I don't know, Rich wants to add anything to that, but.
No, I mean, again, we do have special tax appeal counsel and we can certainly find out whether this was a result of a trial or a settlement. But as Mr. Kizer, Mr. Gross are clearly stating, this has been, is the subject of final judgment. So in response to your question, there is no discretion at this time. It really depends on some of the matters, I present them as they go when I learn of them and you have considered them and approved them. I can't answer as to this particular one, because I don't have, I don't have any information about it. So we can certainly, we'll get you the answer. It's a total refund of $18,421. So, but we can give you further detail.
Please do. And whatever, if there were, if this was something that was a settlement that was negotiated, if there was comps that were used, I'd like to know what they were. I don't know how we arrived at that. I'd like as much information as we have.
I'll set up a conference call for you for tomorrow morning with Mark Hendricks. He's our appraiser who consults on all of this. So he can get you all the information that you need.
Thank you.
And just for everyone, the public's understanding, and I don't know if my council colleagues have looked at the property, it is the 375 Mount Pleasant Avenue, which is the cardiac center by Essex Green. That's what this property is refunding, $18,000 too.
The reason it comes before council is because we're actually doing a refund of cash. If this, for instance, if this were being applied against current taxes or future taxes, it wouldn't come to council because that just gets unapplied. Because it is, it is, I'm sorry, it is a court ordered, a court order, and we have to apply it. So the reason that it's before you is because it's a cash payout, not because of you're not approving the settlement because it's a judgment. You're approving the cash payout.
Right. And the reason I ask those questions, though, and I do understand a little bit better now, but the reason I ask those questions, I've seen that built. And this assessed value here at 550 looks absolutely ridiculous for that build. I mean, I'm not a real estate professional, but that just seems unbelievably low.
I mean, I think Councilman Rutherford, there's a lot to consider, right? We don't know, looking from the outside in, you know, if it's 100%, you know, rented. There's a lot of factors. But I think a conversation with the tax attorney, Mr. Hendricks, would certainly help answer all of our questions. Okay, council colleagues, thank you very much for indulging. Madam Clerk?
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Resolution 10421, Resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Fairview Insurance to serve as insurance broker for the township for 2021, was pulled by Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council colleagues, I do want to share with you that I did have the opportunity to sit in a meeting with our CFO, Mr. Gross, and a representative from Fairview earlier this year to go over the plans. And you know that I have been a strong proponent of moving away from Fairview and/or any private insurance for the state health benefits plan, as I do believe it is a savings. I know that the administration and I differ on that opinion. However, in our conversation, and it was a quite extensive conversation, looking at and comparing all of the numbers, the, Mr. Gross, can you just confirm, what was the gentleman's name? It's escaping my mind, my thought process.
Michael Atkinson.
Okay, so in that conversation and looking and comparing everything that was presented, he had to admit that our township would have saved $2 million had we moved from the retiree prescription plan to the state plan. And that, to me, is, you know, quite extensive. And then the reason why we couldn't leave Benacard was because there was a three-year contract that was signed. And leaving them meant that there was a penalty of sorts. I forget what the penalty was. So what I am stressing is the fact that if we do not ensure that we are going out for competitive bids, and I've said this before, if Fairview is put out to bid and they are the lowest ones, I will eat pro and vote yes. Until that time, I'm not going to support this contract. I think that we owe it to our residents, we owe it to ourselves as taxpayers to ensure that there is a competitive bid process. So that is why I have pulled this, this is why I'm sharing it with you. I am not supportive of the contract. And.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Gross?
If I can just clarify a couple of things. Number one, in terms of, we did, the meeting that you had referred to, which we sat down and talked about, and you absolutely, it was, we, the administration, you are not at odds of whether or not the New Jersey State Health Benefits would save the township money. And the brokers that we use, whether it be our current broker or future broker, do not make the determination of where we go and how we go. But what does make that difference is the level of coverage that we're required to give our employees based on our collective bargaining agreements. And while the state health benefits program would save money to the township, it is not a valid alternative for us because it does not provide the level of services our contracts require. And it is something that we certainly could continue to strive for and negotiate with our unions to get to. But as of now and as of the past 12 years that I've been here, that has not been a viable alternative because of the level of service. Having said that, in terms of, so the competitiveness of our health benefits programs, we do go out and we have our brokers go out and actually bid or use a competitive process with all the different. with all the different carriers there are to provide us with the services that we need in order to provide health benefits to our, our employees, and that is done on a competitive basis. And while we, we, we may look at those costs and say how large they are, the reality is, is that we do, we do it on a competitive basis, and the pricing that we get on it is very fair and, and good pricing for the services that we require. So, that, that, that's the first thing. The, the second, I just want to talk a little bit about the process by which we select not just this professional service contract, but all professional service contracts. The statutes anticipate that professional services are different than buying widgets. Yeah, the infamous widget, where you, where you go out and you put a bid together and say, I need ten thousand widgets, and who can give it to me at the best price? That's a bid process. In a bid process, you are required to give it to the lowest responsible bidder. The, the statutes contemplate that when you're talking about professional services, whether it be your real, your, your insurance brokers, your attorneys, your accountants, any professional service, that there are other factors involved in making that decision. Those factors include the economics, but it also includes the level of service and the, the, I guess, well, I'll say the confidence that the governing body has in the professionals that it selects. And, and the statutes contemplate that the governing body can pick whatever professional service servants they want, or they need, or they desire, based on a multitude of criteria, which is, which we do, and we go out and we advertise for what's, what's called a request for qualifications for professional services. And that's what we do, all of our professional services. And we, we receive those responses, we evaluate those responses, and, and based on, based on that, a recommendation is made to the governing body as to that. In this case, there were, this was publicly advertised, put out, we received two responses, and we have recommended both of the responders to be awarded contracts. So, we feel that we have, we not just fulfilled the spirit of the law, but we have been, we've embraced what, what the legislature, the process of legislatures put in place for the selection of, of all, all of our professional services, and we submit them all for you through the past two evenings, so, thank you.
I certainly appreciate that, and, and do understand that to be the case with respect to the request for qualifications in professional services, and do agree in some respects that the request for qualifications for professional services in some instances are, are best practice, as far as I'm concerned, i.e. selecting a law firm, right? Because law firms have, you know, different specialties, you know, different levels of experience, and, 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 you know, I, I would be, I'm more comfortable with a request for qualifications when it comes to a law firm. When it comes to a contract, a broker that has not been put out to bid, ever, it just does not make good public policy. And if we, if my council colleagues and, and I are supportive of transparency and good public policy, then, then it's incumbent upon us to continue to insist that, that the broker, who did, by the way, I, I know he goes out and there is solicitation for other services, goods and services, could have done better than reimburse us a million dollars, because he could have saved us two million dollars. Not, not going with the Benacard, you and I were on that phone call, and he verbatim said, yes. He verbatim said that.
Right, but however, however, again, we were not in a position to do that. You know, it was, it's a theoretical question that it was answered, to the extent that we would save two million dollars, yes. But we did not charge him to go out and find that level of service, because legally, we could not award that level of service.
So, I'm gonna allow me, allow me to push back a little bit on that, Mr. Gross. With all due respect, we were in the middle of negotiations with our unions, and our unions, for the most part, at least three of them were willing to give up the language, and I, and, and as a labor supporter, I even thought that that was good language to give up in the, in the contract for future negotiations, to give up the equal to or better language, because they had been at a contract for so long, they were willing to negotiate that, and I encouraged that negotiation, but here we are. And, and I understand that language, the equal to or better, very well. But I, I challenge that the administration could have negotiated that out, so that in the future, we would have been able to better solicit and save money for, for our taxpayers. So, I'm, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, I, I know you and I have gone, gone through this in advenatum, I'm sure, but that is my position.
And, and I, I certainly agree, the administration appreciates that, the administration will have to agree to disagree with you. I do want to push back a little bit, I, I understand that, that you may have been given information that, that that was something that was attainable. I can tell you categorically that it was not attainable, with, 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 and, and we only needed one union not, only one union to not accept it. And, 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 and there were more than one union that would not have accepted it. So, we can, like I said, we can agree to disagree, I certainly have no reason to, I mean, certainly believe that you've been given information to, to, that, that's consistent with what your position is, but I can tell you that having been involved firsthand in the negotiations, that, that, that could not have happened. But it may happen in the future, it may happen in.
Mr. Gross, isn't it true that we don't pay?
Oh, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Did anybody, can you hear me now?
Now, we can hear, yes.
I said, Mr. Gross, isn't it true that we don't pay them broker fees, that they get paid from, from the insurance carriers? Not from us?
Yeah, they, they're, they're, they're paid by the carrier.
They don't get paid by the township, they get paid by the carrier, we don't pay them. And on top of, on top of that, they're, 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 you know, they provide a service to the township that we feel is a great service for all the employees, and, 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 and for as long as we've been dealing with them, and that's why we like working with them.
I, I appreciate it and, and respect that, and certainly understand that while we do not write, write a check to Fairview Insurance Company, they, they do benefit from being our brokers and seeking out.
But they don't get paid by us, they get paid by the brokers and the insurance carriers, not by the township.
No, I.
And that's why we, that's why we, it's another one of the good reasons we want to keep them.
In a roundabout way, they do get paid by us, by our tax dollars.
They do not.
Okay, Mrs. Sayers, we'll, we'll agree to disagree. Thank you, Councilman Rutherford, your hand, and then I see, I see Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President, I don't want to beat a dead horse either, but I don't think the horse is dead, it might be dying. With regard to the unions, I've spoken with all but one of the union leaders, and they all were willing to allow us to present something to them from the state health benefits plan. And there's just no way in the world we wouldn't save any money if we moved into that plan. And I understand that there may be some runoff costs, and I know we've had other estimates in the past. It's my understanding that the estimates in the past for runoff costs were not held to be accurate over the course of time. But reality is, I think the, 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 I think Fairview actually wasn't even allowed to consider the state health benefits plan. And correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I, I may be wrong, but I don't even think they were allowed to consider it as they evaluated what the right plan was for us. And then to Mr. Sayers' point, they, the broker certainly does get paid by the carrier. The carrier gets paid by us, and built into that payment from us to the carrier is the commission that they're going to pay the broker. So, Council President is exactly right, while we do not pay them directly, we are paying them indirectly through the rates we pay for the insurance coverage we have. But the, the point is, tonight, we've had several residents during public comment talk about transparency. And this is, they were talking about it in a different way, they were talking about with regard to these development projects. But this is another aspect of transparency. If we are going to be good stewards over these tax dollars, we have to do our very best to make informed decisions about how we're spending them, and we can't do that with regard to our insurance unless we have a competitive process. So I think we need to do that across the board, but we certainly need to do it with, with Fairview, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford, Councilwoman Castellino.
So, I had multiple conversations with not only union leaders, but membership. And I, as where leaders might have been advocating for us to look at the state health benefit plan and, and move it forward, there was not support there for us to ever change that language to get rid of the same or better. I, I, I do, did not believe that was ever going to be agreed upon to take out any one of those contracts. So, as far as that conversation goes, I, again, I was, you know, had multiple conversations, and I feel that, that that never would have been negotiated out this, this past go-around. However, in regards to Fairview and the bidding process, we did ask at, last year at the budget hearings for it to be bid out, and I just want to ask Mr. Gross, was that, or Mr. Sayers, if that was, you know, ever considered. I know, Mr. Gross, you know, I, I know you have been a big advocate for us keeping this broker, because I know you are very favorable of the service. A lot of mention we get, it's the mayor, but I, I truly believe, knowing from talking to you, the pushback comes from you. Be, maybe you could share the, the service that they do accommodate us with. But I also, we also had the discussion as well, to be fair, to the council from last budget season and the year before, about bidding it out.
Um, you're, you're absolutely right that the, the level of service that's required from our broker in terms of our day-to-day operations with providing service directly to our employees and our retirees is, is significant, and then there's a lot of, you know, there is a, a lot of activity on a day-to-day basis, and that, that is handled, some, some of it is handled out of my office, but the vast majority is handled out of Fairview's office. And, and they do a very fine job with, with that. It, to the, to the issue of, of whether or not to bid out these services, I would never recommend to you to bid a professional service, because keep in mind, if you do a bid, you are required to award to the lowest responsible bidder. Not, you, you, there's no, you cannot, if you do a bid process, it, bid is all about price, and not about, not about other factors. So I would never recommend that you do a pure bid for, for these types of services. That's why the, you know, the administration has embraced, that, that, what, again, we talked, there was some reference that perhaps this wasn't good government. The fact of the matter is, we're following exactly what the legislature is saying good government does, which is, goes through a, an open and fair process to select its professional services based on a request for qualifications. So that's what the statutes say, that's what we do, and, and, you know, we, 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 we try very hard to, to follow that, as opposed to doing a, the, the alternative, which is where, when you, when you don't go out for a request for qualifications. We, we think that's a really important part, and that is good government, as, as defined by the legislature. So, again, you know, a, a bid process sounds like it would be really, really good, but with professional services, if, if you did a bid, and you got the lowest bid came in, and it was a, a, a firm that you didn't have the confidence could, could provide the, the service to our residents, you'd still have to take it. Because, you know, we, we, we've always heard, we've all heard and seen the horror stories of what happened sometime with the lowest responsible bidder. And so this, this is the tried and, and true way that the legislature says we should be doing it, and that's the way that we do.
And again, the bottom line, as I said before, was we've been using them for a very long time, and their services for not just the township, but for the employees, has been astronomical. And that's another reason we want to keep them.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers, Councilwoman Castellino, is that all your questions?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna, just out of fairness, I'm gonna piggyback on what Mr. Sayers had said, having multiple conversations with staff throughout the years, they, they are, they are happy with their service. That's why, year after year, I, I had always supported this, this contract. However, we, you know, we, we did have that discussion last year, I'll defer to Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, this just became even more complicated, because the resolution we have, not on Fairview, but we were just asked to reject all bids from the firehouse, the work done at the firehouse, and that was a bid, was the lowest bid, and the level of service was not what our engineer was expecting of them. So that's why I'm saying this is complicated, my years on the council also, is that the level of service was all about those contractual obligations, it would always have to be the same or better. I can understand what you're saying. I, I'm thinking with, when Mr. Gross was just talking about bidding out all of the different plans, that is exactly what I do with my employees, I do have a broker, and I expect them to come in with the lowest plan for me and my employees, so that I can maintain the level of service. And I was saying that we did want to put this out last year, we did say at our budget hearing that we would put this out for bid. And that's what I'm saying, this is now complicating that, because I thought that we were going in that direction, but yet I don't want to jeopardize that, any type of level of service or contractual obligation, so.
So, I, I just want to follow up on what you just said with respect to rejecting all the bids for Mr. Lepore, that he asked us to reject. It was because the, the, the way the bid was written was confusing to those who responded, it wasn't because of the level of service. So, as I understand, when bids are written, we, we write the bid specs to what we are looking for, that level of service can be detailed in the bid specifications. Everything that it is that we are looking for, or we appreciate in Fairview, we can put those bid specifications in a bid. So, it, it's very different than, than rejecting what the, the bid responses that Mr. Lepore asked us to do, quite different. So, I, I, I don't want to belabor the point, I, I hear everyone, what, you know, what everyone is saying, but I'm, I'm gonna, unless anyone else has anything, any other comments to add or questions, I am going to ask Madam Clerk to, we'll vote, please. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, you're muted.
Sorry, is there a motion to approve one oh four dash twenty-one? No motion? Motion.
During our last budget hearing, we did ask for this to go out. It was a recommendation from the council to put this out.
Thank you, council colleagues. And I I do understand, Mr. Gross, that the legislature does put out, you know, laws that we can follow. And what I said was good public policy, not, you know, governance. Thank you.
Council President, can we go back to Resolution 119 dash 21? Because I did, and so that social media doesn't, I take on a life of its own. I did get our special tax appeal counsel, Mr. Bao. He thought I was going because the Mets had won a game and he was excited. But he did clarify specifically, Mr. Councilman Rutherford's question. So specifically, with regard to this tax appeal settlement on Resolution 119 dash 21, which is styled as referring to 375 Mount Pleasant. This is, in fact, a medical condo building. And this is just one of the units in the building. He looked online. Again, I'm sure, Council President, you seem very good at the lookout. This is only 2,000, a 2,563 square foot condo unit at that building. So when Councilman Rutherford refers to the reduction, this was part of a settlement that was approved by the tax court. I don't know the full size of that building, but I would suggest it's it's at least 70 to 100,000 square foot building. So so this is a a small part of the building. Apparently, the owner withdrew the challenges for 2018 and 2019, agreed to a per square foot at $250 for a per square foot for 2020 and $220 for 2021. So again, I'll be, I welcome to have any meeting with anyone else. And I would just ask, anybody ever in reviewing the packet has the question. Certainly, Mr. Gross or I will be glad to have these, get you all the background and bring the professionals here, just like you you asked in many occasions for anything that you want more information for. But that's the information. This is only a 2,563 square foot unit in a medical condo building. It is not the entire complex. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Certainly appreciate that better understanding. Madam Clerk?
A Resolution 116 dash 21, Resolution authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Phillips Price Greigl for Township Planner 2021. This was pulled by Council President Matu Brown.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, to my colleagues and to the public. I I have said this before about Mr. Greigl's firm. My challenge is not Mr. Greigl's firm, his expertise. As if you look at, if you do a quick Google search to find his firm, they're quite impressive with their development projects. They are in Hoboken, have developed the Hoboken waterfront. And and, you know, obviously, quite successful at what they do. However, I I pulled this because, as much as I respect Mr. Greigl's and his firm's expertise, I am going to vote against this because I don't think the administration, this is my first term, third year, is going to do any differently with respect to making sure that we have a town planner. It is absolutely necessary to have someone who is going to oversee. And I'm going to say this because I spoke to and met with Mr. Greigl at the planning planning board off, at the planning office. And I asked him, in his opinion, because he works with a lot of municipalities, in his opinion, what did he feel would benefit us in making sure that our planning department was more effective? And and it, his response was was what I anticipated. We need someone who is there every day, making sure that they're overseeing this. So Mr. Greigl, as a consultant, is charged with, you know, yes, the master plan, which which he, which which he has experienced in every 10 years. He reviews all of the planning applications, all of the zoning applications. But but he is a consultant, so he is not someone who is going to fulfill the need that our township has to look at the needs of our community to 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 be able to put a cohesive plan together where we don't have this mod pod of of developments happening. And I I, and you all know that I have been asking for a town planner. I, we discussed an economic developer. But I I am, I I am concerned that we have so many projects on the horizon. And there isn't a planner to bring them all together in a concise, comprehensive, you know, someone that has a focus on 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 investment, on economic development, on on developing with sustainability. He's great at what he does. However, I I am going to continue to push on needing someone in the planning office to do the job of a town planner. So that's why I pulled it. I don't know if my council colleagues want to add to that. Otherwise, we can call for a vote. Did any of my council colleagues, Councilwoman Casselino? And then I see Councilwoman McCartney and, okay, and then Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Casselino.
I want to hear Councilwoman McCartney's comments first because she does work closely with Mr. Greigl before I go further.
Councilwoman McCartney. So I wanted to say firsthand that I certainly appreciate the comments that you just said about Paul's firm, Mr. Greigl's work there. At every planning board meeting, at every technical review meeting. Again, he brings a wealth of experience and knowledge. This, just last May, May 4th, our meeting, we authorized his firm to do the amendment, the comprehensive amendment to the downtown redevelopment plan. We also authorized them to do a plan for an area need of rehabilitation, townwide plan. So I believe that the expertise is there. This boils down to a budget issue that we are, we addressed last year. We're going to have to do it again next week about doing a full time planner, a full time employee because of budget constraints and limitations. That's, I feel like that's why we have been going in this direction of a consultant. If there is another title, just like you mentioned, the economic development, we did put money aside for that. If there is another title that we're looking at, I think that should be discussed at our budget hearing. But even to develop a comprehensive plan, if an applicant owns a property and they want to do something for it, it's not something a planner can, they can advise them. And I understand that our zoning officer does that continuously, advising people that call every day about properties in town. But it would not be a planner to tell someone they can or cannot do something with a property if it, if they're zoned to do that. So I don't know. I I just can't understand this comprehensive plan. We all have a comprehensive plan. We just went through our master plan. We just adopted it in January. We had open public sessions. I understand what you're saying, that there is a global view. But I don't, I I I am very satisfied with the expertise in in what Mr. Greigl presents to the town. And maybe we, there needs to be more work done in the planning department.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Casselino.
So, you know, we we approved and set money aside for an economic developer two years ago. And then the pandemic hit. You know, there's always seems to be an end then, but now we're on the upswing. It's super busy. The zoning department is short staffed. We all agree Mr. Greigl is, does a phenomenal job. Even people that criticize us for not having a planner still commend Mr. Greigl and his skills. So that's, that's not the issue. Mr. Greigl isn't the issue here. If we had an economic developer in place when the, when the pandemic hit, what I learned at the downtown New Jersey conferences this this past winter is that that would have been a person in a situation that really could assist it or small business owners get through the pandemic with helping them with the different grants that were out there and their needs. And so I, you know, I'm disappointed that we still haven't gone there, that administration hasn't gone that far. I know we're looking for this excited for this committee next week. And kudos to some of the volunteers already on it. But there is a void in the day to day operation. And how many times have we all read the emails? You know, a project gets approved. And then, you know, the 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 application, once it's built, there's items that, you know, the checklist wasn't completed. And that that needs to end. So I don't, I would like to make the recommendation to, recommendation tonight. And actually, I'll make the motion to table this because I don't want to vote down Mr. Greigl because I I appreciate his value and I'd like to give administration an opportunity to come back to us in budget hearings next week on how to resolve this issue with this void and to put in the economic developer and 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 how you're going, you know, where where the plan is for our zoning department and support. So I don't know what that answer is tonight, but I I would like to recommend to table this tonight because I don't want, you know, I'm not, I'm not ready to make this decision on on this contract. Thank you, Council President.
You're, you're welcome, Councilwoman Casselino.
Council, I'd like to hear from Councilwoman Williams. I saw her raise her hand.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford and then Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. My, I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. My concern is that we don't have someone looking at all of the various projects at the same time and can look to give us guidance, advice, influence on how to leverage some of these projects so that they can be helpful to each other. I, I'm happy to table it, but I I think we've gone long enough without someone who's responsible on a daily basis for making those decisions that can serve as a single point of contact. And that can, you know, give us the advice and the assistance we need in in organizing these various developments and trying to get the best use out of these spaces and also meeting the needs of the community. So none of that language is in, what is it, 116? Is that what we're looking at? None of, none of that language is, or whichever one it is, yeah, 116. Yeah, none of that language is in there, and I'd like to see that included. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. So I just have two comments. One was that we were very all supportive of having an Economic Development Commission that was going to serve in this capacity at no expense to the municipality. And so as the liaison, you know, I'm I'm a little shocked that now we're pivoting to a different direction when that was the rationale for for us to create that commission and reenact that commission that was already on the books. And I would be adamantly opposed to trying to hire someone in that capacity when we don't even have the staff necessary on hand right now to handle the development that we already have. So whether or not we look at this from a holistic approach, you know, we need to look at where we are lacking as a community, as a municipality, and just making sure, I'm a real estate professional. If I go and I try to get permits for properties to exchange and transfer ownership, there is a two, three, four week lag process that we can't even get someone to go out and inspect the property. So before we start trying to, you know, find monies to create an economic development or developer, we need to make sure we have adequate staffing in our municipality, in our planning and zoning department. So, you know, th- those are some things that I think we're just trying to pow everything into into one pot. But there are different scenarios that we really need to look at. And, you know, I I'm, I have no issue with tabling if that's the direction of the council. But I want us to be very clear on the direction that we're trying to go.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And I, and I want to be very clear that as the liaison to the Economic Development Commission, it wasn't created or reinstated because that that commission was dormant for quite some time. It wasn't created instead of a planner. It was created because there were some interests and there was, some of the members who volunteered had special access to to others who may want to invest in town. And that's the conversation that this committee is going to be having. This commission is going to be having on Thursday. And I think we are clear in the direction that we need to go in. It is to find a direction because this township does not have one, has not have one. There is no cohesive plan. We need a direction. And I agree with Councilwoman Casselino. The planning board and and zoning office, I mean, the zoning and the planning boards are severely understaffed. And I know that the mayor likes to do more with less. Unfortunately, that 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 has not been a practice in this space. To your point, Councilwoman Williams, when when someone applies for a permit, you know, it it's no fault of the zoning officers at all. It's one individual in that office. And and I agree that we do have to find a solution to that. And unfortunately, it's similar in some other offices within Town Hall. But that does not negate the fact that we need a planner to be able to help us create, guide, streamline, focus, you know, the projects that we have ongoing, to serve as that that charade that everyone is is speaking about. You know, it would only benefit us. Councilman, no, Councilwoman McCartney and then Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you again. I am opposed to tabling this or this resolution because I think that is just going to exacerbate the problem, the situation that we all just described and we all know that we're living through in the planning department. We did allocate money at last year's budget to look at another employee or another consultant. Two, that might be the job description that you were looking for because now that we have instituted and reinstated the Economic Development Commission, that job title can fall on that particular person that we put money aside. But to table this now, it exacerbates the issues that we have there. So I am not in favor of tabling this at this time. It's a one year contract. And in the meantime, we can fill that other position where money was already allocated.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. My comment is, in general, there's no other appropriate time to to say it. So I I'm happy to let this conversation play out. I see Councilwoman Casselino raise her hand as well and then have my comment at the end.
Councilwoman Casselino.
I I'm just going to ask again, and I appreciate Councilwoman McCartney's responses. But I I don't, you know, I'm not going to be able, you know, I'll abstain this evening. If we, again, I like to make a motion to table this and let, I'm sure administration is listening to as loud and clear. And I'd like them to reevaluate and propose something at the budget hearing next week.
If you make, if you're making that motion, I will support that motion second.
Okay, Councilwoman Casselino.
To table this, yes.
Councilwoman McCartney.
I am going to vote no, but I do want to say that if we're tabling this and we bring it back, then the comments that were made, that you're looking, if we can. then the comments that were made that you're looking, if we can include that, if this is going to be renegotiated with the planner, then, then we, we put that language in this contract.
Yeah.
Councilman Rutherford.
This is to table, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
You're muted.
I apologize. I'll abstain.
Council President Matu Brown.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is carried.
Thank you very much, Council colleagues, for a robust discussion or many robust discussion this evening. We do have another matter.
Council President, I just wanted to go back to 10421 because there was no action taken. And when I went back to look, to see how to handle it, it says to dispose of a business item, the motion should be phrased as a positive action to take. And then if the group desire, desires not to take this action, the motion should be voted down. So there should be some action taken on that resolution.
So then I move to vote the 104 dash 21 Fairview Insurance Contract down.
Okay, so I'm going to put you as the first and I need a second.
Thank you.
Okay, and then if you want to say no, just vote no. Councilwoman Castellino.
So this is to vote, so we'd have to vote it down.
Right, you'd have to say no.
Even if it goes for bid.
You're voting on this resolution tonight.
So now.
Okay, Councilwoman McCartney.
You're, you're muted, Councilwoman.
No, I'm not.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, Councilman Rutherford.
Just to be clear, a no vote.
Is voting this resolution down.
Is a no vote, votes it down.
Correct.
No.
You're not going to pass it. Councilwoman Williams.
No.
Council President Matu Brown.
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Very good. Okay, so now we have, I'm sorry, ordinances on first reading. 2643 dash 21, an ordinance of the Township of West Orange approving an application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 18 Central Avenue Urban Renewal LLC. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
No, moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown.
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I know this is on first introduction. Mr. Trank, I, I just want to make sure that all of my council colleagues receive the revised financial agreement this afternoon. I know that Mr. Trank and I and Mr. Alper, hello, Mr. Alper. Thank you for hanging out, waiting, waiting for us late this evening. Mr. Sullivan, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for circulating the amended financial agreement. Did any of my council colleagues have any questions? Do they want to have discussions? In advance of that, for the public's knowledge, I do want to say that the, what was circulated, amended, was the result of a conversation that I had with our attorneys, with Mr. Alper, with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Gross on the actual structure of the rates for the financial agreement. So that, that is what has been amended. My council colleagues, that should be on page nine, I believe, or 10 of the financial agreement. I did not print it out, but Mr. Trank, do you have that?
Yes, your, Council President, you're absolutely correct. It's on pages nine and 10, it's section 4.2, and it shows the increase. It starts at a 10% as set forth in the agreement. The last year that these properties were assessed, and as everyone on the council knows, this is a, basically a superfund site that because of all the efforts of the township and specifically the efforts of the Alper Group over the last 14 years or so, a, a new neighborhood is coming and a clean neighborhood, a safe neighborhood. So there's already 218 units there. If the council approves the financial agreement tonight, there'll be 94 units put on the site that is known as Biddleman slash Selecto Flash. There'll be 22 shared parking spaces or available to the public. The mayor is always sought to have public parking there in part to support Luna Theater and other hopeful ingredients that community. And as you are also aware, there'll be 17 units developed about a block away on Tompkins or all affordable by the Alper Group also. This project has been approved by the planning board already. And we are hopeful, and every two weeks, we're having conference calls with our environmental consultants and the DEP. And we're hopeful that if the council gives approval tonight, that a shovel will go in the ground on the last remaining part, parts of this by late fall of this year, if not sooner. So that is a financial agreement. It will go from 10% in year one. It will then go up to 11%, I believe it's in year 16. And then it will go to 11 and a half percent in year 26 or 27. So, and then it ends up at 12% in year 30. I thank the Council President for all of her time last night and this morning and this afternoon. And again, Mr. Alper has appeared before the council before and I believe is available on, on the panel tonight.
I would, I would like to ask Mr. Alper, when we were on the call earlier, you gave such a great summary with historical context of your involvement since 2008 with these properties. And I would, I would really appreciate if you can do the same for my council colleagues as well as for the public.
I will try to replicate that at this time of night.
There's no test questions, I promise.
Yeah, okay, I, I will try. So yes, and thank you very much for this opportunity. We actually took title to the property. We actually worked on forming the BDA before we even took a title to any properties in 2006 with Rose from West Orange, Hans, and, you know, representatives of both Orange and West Orange to form a BDA, which is a brownfield development area. At the time in 2006, all the site had were vacant industrial buildings, about five of them, and the Fregan Automotive Site on West Orange and the Selecta Flesh and Biddleman. In 2008, we closed and took title to the Harvard Printing Site, which is, as Mr. Trank referenced, 128 units in Orange, but also the 100 units in West Orange that became the Valley Road Site. We're very proud of the Valley Road Site. It's a combination of 55 affordable units and 45 market rate units. We became before your, your council. That's got to be five or six years ago and received, well, we got, we got a planning board approval for what was built. And we also got a pilot agreement on that property for 10% of adjusted gross rent. We moved forward with the municipality to do what we like to call Phase Three, the Selecta Flesh Biddleman Property. Very challenging in that it's, it's still in a flood hazard area. There was a large, two large buildings. One is, one is already demolished. I was selected, the Alper Group was selected, designated developer. And it was a true, true partnership in that the township said, although we own the property, if we designate you interim direct developer, you spend $300,000 to demolish the property. And we did. And that was in 20, I think, 16, we were designated. Then there was a lot of things that happened, as I, as I mentioned to your council, council president. It was determined that because it was still owned by municipality, we had to contribute another $75,000 to make it a prevailing wage job. And, and we were happy to do so and we lent that money basically to the township to demolish the building that they, the site that they owned. We went further and we contributed money to, contribute a portion of money to take out underground environmental tanks. Then I think what made the biggest change in the, in the project was when we had the opportunity as a private company and went into contract on the Biddleman Site. The Biddleman Site really is the crux to this whole project. It, it's the contributing factor. It's formerly a cleaning, laundry cleaner, dry cleaner. And, and that caused leakage of, of contaminants into town to cause the designation of a superfund site. And we've been, you know, really working hard to clean up the whole area. The first problem was the hating industry with mercury contamination. But then an even bigger problem with the superfund site was the dry cleaning solutions. So we've been working for the last fif- five years as designated developer with the DEP to get approval of a plan to clean the site, not just to put buildings there, but to clean the site of Selecta Flesh and Biddleman. So we've been working on that. When we were designated, they set a purchase price, the council did. And it says it in the RDA of 1.5 million. It's really 1.8 billion because of the 300,000 we had already spent, as I mentioned, on the demolition. But at the time, and still, the valley is an area that is not as advanced to residential development as Executive Drive or the Edison Battery, in fact, your other redevelopment plans. So at the end, at that time in the RDA, we had put in that we were going to seek this, what we're here today to seek, a 30-year tax abatement. At the time, we had pegged it at 10%. We also are contributing, even this project, continuing our affordable housing in the valley by another 17 units, as Mr. Trank mentioned, at the, the one block away on Tompkins. So we're actually helping the town's, you know, co-obligation also. But we are, what we feel is a good partner in town. We've looked at other sites with you. We're, 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 we're at heart an affordable housing company. You know, we did a mix, two mixed income jobs in the valley. Now we're going to market rate, one market rate and one affordable. And so we, we feel that in working together, you know, to, to give the town in year 16, a bump to 11% after we looked at the big picture, was worthwhile to get the town some more economic benefit because it still allows us to build this valuable housing. So we're really here today to continue what we've done in the valley. You know, there, there's a lot more to be done. We want to do the Selecta Flash Site. We want to give the town the added parking of 22 municipal spots. We want to do more great luxury affordable housing, we'd like to call it, on Tompkins and work together. And that's why we thought the conversations today were very valuable. And, you know, we, 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 we hope you look upon this considerably tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, for all of your, your time and energy. I know yesterday late and today, and again, late tonight. Do, okay, and Mr. Trank to you too, because, you know, we, it was, you participated in those. Did any of my council colleagues have any questions that they wanted to put forth or comments that they wanted to make with respect to this financial agreement? Councilwoman Castellino.
Councilman Rutherford actually had his.
Oh, okay, that's right. I'm sorry. I didn't see it in the corner. I'm sorry. Councilman Rutherford.
No worries. Thank you, Council President. I am in receipt of the mail that was sent out with the adjusted abatement information. It was Table Four, I believe, in Appendix A. But I don't, I don't have the updated data. Those are, whatever, what was sent to me, all of the exhibits are, there, there are no exhibits attached. So I, I don't have the 11% that's been spoken about. I, I, I don't see that. I just see the original one. So, yeah, I'd like to.
The municipal, the municipal clerk emailed it today to all the council.
Maybe I'm doing something wrong, but I looked at that email and I didn't have this table in it. But I'll double check.
It's pages 10 and 11. It's not a table. It's in the meat of the agreement.
Section 4.2, Councilman, 4.2, page 9 to 10. That's where the numbers, that's the only section that was revised from the prior version. I see. Thank you. All right, thank you. And then secondly, why are we not dealing with Tompkins Street at the same time? What, I mean, help me understand. I, I know that this is, you know, the larger project. But why aren't we dealing with both of them since the affordable housing units are all in Tompkins Street, right? And I would say that we would take a global approach.
And they're linked, Councilmen, and again, as, as was pointed out earlier, the only way that the Alper Group gets a CO on the 94 unit is if the 70 units are, that are at the same point in construction. The reason that this one is ahead of it is this, this site, which as you know, is all the environmental challenges, has other approvals ahead of it to, to get done, the vapor intrusion, the soil examination. And, and it's really, it, they're, I don't, I can't, they're going to be, they're different financing, they're different lots and blocks, but from the tangible point of view, we're going to get delivered the 17 units. Now, Mr. Sullivan and the other professionals, the Alper Group, got to the planning board sooner. And again, only Mr. Sullivan can give us the whole history of that with regard to the 94 units. So it's slightly ahead of it. But again, I believe the planning board just at the last meeting, is that right? Approved? So, so we've been working on Selecta Flesh Biddleman way in advance since 2016. Tompkins wa- was added later. So it's, it was well in advance of it. We've been working, you know, in the environmental. And you're right, it was about, I think, exactly a month ahead on the planning board cycle. And we're probably going to be a month ahead on the pilot. But we don't want to slow down on a process that we've been working so hard on. So we do want to secure this agreement and then come right back to the council in the next month or two for the Tompkins financial agreement, which we will need your approval of before we get started. But we could never place in service any of the market rate units without the affordable units at the same time.
Those are, that's a condition of the RDA and also the planning board approval. We have to, we have to do the affordable as a part of this. There is also the mechanics of it, Councilman, that, that the, the ownerships of the two properties are in different names. There has to be a separate agreement done. We couldn't just do one agreement for both properties. So that's, that's really the reason why, why we're doing this. And we'll be back in, I think, you know, shortly with, with the agreement for Tom, for Tompkins. Thank you. That's it for me, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Castellino.
I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Alper for, and, and Mr. Trank for going at it and revising this to make the council comfortable. We, you're such a great partner, Mr. Alper, and just look forward to seeing this completion. When I first came on the council, this is one of the first projects that I had to deal with. And you've always been a pleasure to work with. So thank, thank you so much for all your cooperation and your time that you've spent on, on these projects for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any of my other council colleagues have any comments or questions?
Right, so you know, right, so, Mr. Alper, he already knows. You know, as I said, I've grown up in that area. But just to listen to what he just said about a brownfield development he tackled, flood hazard zone he's tackled, daylight at the stream on top of providing what, what looks like luxury apartments there on Central Avenue. So I look forward to more development on that particular site. And it is related to Tompkins Street, as I mentioned in my council liaison announcement, that the parking is on Central Avenue and the 22 parking spaces that we need a lease agreement there for those public spaces. So we appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. And for those, for those of you who have not taken the opportunity, now that it's warmer and we're able to go out a little bit more, I, I encourage you to take a walk in the neighborhood of Central Avenue. The building is a beautiful building. The premises are beautiful premises. And I, I think, not I think, I know that the Valley Arts District, the residents in the valley certainly will benefit from this project and those to follow on. certainly will benefit from this project and those to follow on Tompkins Street. The businesses in the area will also see more clientele and, and be more successful as a result. So I'm excited that, that we are prioritizing this in, in the Valley District and look forward to, to great things with our partnership, Mr. Alpert. So thank you very much once again for entertaining the discussion and, and going back and revising the agreement so that you could have the support of the council this evening. Certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Trank, as well as Mr. Sullivan.
You are.
Thank you. So that was it on first introduction.
No, we have one more.
We do.
Yeah, there was a revised agenda. It's a salary ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's 2644-21, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. This has to do with the FMBA MOA, Fire Superior MOA, and an account clerk. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
No.
Sir, a second?
Second.
I have you as the first.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. And, and just to, to repeat what Madam Clerk said, this has to do with the settlement of the labor, the union contracts for the FMBA Superior Officers' contracts. And it's on first reading. Look forward to its adoption during the next council meeting. Thank you.
Next item is pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Councilwoman Castellino, I understand that you had some items for council discussion, new matters?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Council President. A quick, just first, before I get into what I actually asked you about today, I have a note after our previous discussion for Mr. Gross. When we have or we get our budget books this week, if there was any change in the organizational chart, I, I assume those changes would be noted and we get an updated organizational chart with the budget.
Mr. Gross, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I'm sorry. So, so my question was if, if there's any changes in the organizational chart with staffing or, you know, restructuring with any positions, will we have that update in the back of the budget book this year?
There are no, there are no changes in, in the, the chart, I believe. And, you know, obviously we'll find.
Okay.
But I don't believe there's any, any substantive changes. There are, there may be some changes that are as part of special requests, but that wouldn't be in, you know, that hasn't happened yet. So that wouldn't be in, in the chart.
Okay. Okay. So that was just my request. If there's, if there were anything that would change organizational sort, that that would be updated for this year. Okay, outdoor cafes. Last year, we, they were a necessity. And because of COVID-19, we assisted our, and, and thanks, our, our staff, our coronavirus task force went right into action. And the mayor with approvals, good, good thing we had an ordinance already in place that we could establish outdoor cafes for businesses, and it worked out beautifully. Now the spring has sprung, some restaurants still have them. And, you know, some are inside now. They're comfortable and they're not offering them. However, I've been in touch with a few of our business owners who would like to keep them permanently. So that being the case, moving forward, right now, I believe that we probably have to do something in regards to process. Right now, we're operating still under COVID conditions. I know I spoke with the clerk, Madam Clerk, earlier today. So let's take this in sections here as far as the liquor license goes. You said they would have to do that on their own, but we would need to notify them? Or how would that, you know, we, we just need to put a plan in place for, for the restaurants who want to continue this year after year.
Right. They would need, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, they would need an extension of premises? You're muted.
Yeah, I believe, I mean, I'm not sure what's going to happen with the COVID regulations. It seems like they're going to eventually die, die out. But at the, at the moment, they would need an extension of the premises. I think that's the way it was working. And, and the chief is familiar with the process as well, so.
Okay. So, but moving forward, I like a process to be in place. So say next spring comes and, you know, even this fall or over the summer, you know, COVID restrictions are lifted, I want something in process that they can continue if they want to have their outdoor cafes.
Well, I mean, look, remember that ABC law is state, state law. It's, and, and while we have an ordinance that deals with these issues as well, we're going to have to follow, and, and all the licensees are going to have to follow whatever, ever the ABC Division in Trenton demands. So, and, and what, how, whether and how that's going to change after the COVID emergency passes, we really don't know for sure. Hopefully, there's some sort of, you know, phase in, phase out type of arrangement so that people don't get, you know, lost in this. And so that ABC licensees have a chance to operate in a way that will make things profitable for them. We'll just have to wait and see how it plays out.
So I guess what I'm requesting from administration is that just to prepare, for example, some of our locations may be in the back of a parking lot, but they're operating, you know, they're not a nuisance to the traffic. If the chief and the zoning officer feels that they're adequate to have each year, if they want to continue to do so, I'm just asking for the administration to put together a process so we can move forward if they want to reopen each season. I think right now the ordinance says outdoor cafes are from April to maybe October 1st. Oh, I see the chief's back on here. So, you know, just, we have to figure it out tonight. I just want us to start working on a process because for, one of the restaurant owners had called me yesterday asking what our intentions were because they want to reinvest in their outdoor tent. You know, some tents weren't as secure as others, but if moving forward, they're able to have that outdoor cafe, then it would be worth the investment. If it's just until we, they reach 100% capacity, they may not move in that direction. So I just want to assist them with helping them within some sort of planning and, and advise them, be able to advise them.
While, while we're still under emergency orders, we have no problem with that. And certainly, we're not looking to, to rush to get back to that, that part of normal. However, after emergency orders, whenever that may occur, then the original, come back into play and, and, and will have to be enforced. So if there are, are things that, that council would like to, us to look at and, and if we should be looking at, at zoning changes, now's the time to start talking about it, referring that to the planning board, start to get it in place. If there's some changes that, that we've seen, that, that we want to memorialize for the long term, that really should be done officially.
I see the chief.
Spearhead this. It's, it's not a heavy lift. All I have to do is find out between Karen and John Demars where the permits are currently. We'll give them all notice that they should put in for this now under the normal ABC conditions rather than worry about anything with COVID. If it gets automatically extended through the emergency orders, it's just that much easier. But if it doesn't, they're already in the pipeline to get what they need. And as John pointed out, you're going to need to, you know, get zoning approval and everything else. So you get all those mechanics working. I, I can do, I can start on this tomorrow. It's not a big deal.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman McCartney and then Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, thank you very much. I did not expect to hear that. I would ask the clerk if you could send us the outdoor cafe ordinance so that we could look at that. And I appreciate the chief saying that, you know, what you're asking is for a local plan that a lot of the restaurants, a lot of the residents enjoyed eating outdoors and would like to continue to do that. I think it's an excellent idea. And Chief, thank you for helping to put the plan together. That's really what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Awesome. Councilwoman Williams.
Councilwoman McCartney took the word. I wanted to ask if we could get a copy of what the ordinance is so that we have something to review and we know what we need to be looking at. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. This is on a separate matter. And so I, I'm happy to wait. But, you know, if we're done with that, if we're not done with that, I'm happy. Okay. Tonight, we went through and awarded multiple professional services agreements, various different companies, various different types. And I spoke with Council President about this earlier. I did not get a chance to send you an email, Mr. Gross, but I will certainly do that as soon as we wrap this meeting tonight. I'd like to know how many of these agreements that we've awarded tonight, how many of those firms are minority owned, are women owned? How many of them have minorities in senior leadership? How many of them are West Orange residents? And what is our process, or if we have a process to encourage or to seek out? Make sure that we include in the, in the pool of potential vendors, more minority women-owned businesses as well as West Orange residents. That's it.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I wanted to thank you, Bill, for that because I think that that's it. We do have preferences on hiring. And I think that that could also be built into RFPs, RFQs that are sent out for professional, or professional services to include that, to look at a preferential. Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
So on a totally different note, I've been contacted and I wanted to ask the administration. I understand that there is a revamping of the playground at Hazel School. And I wanted to understand if that is exclusively the purview of the Board of Education or if there is some type of combination that can be looked at with the municipality in revamping that playground. I know Mr. Lepore is no longer with us this evening, but if, if we could get some feedback on that, it would be greatly appreciated.
Will do.
Councilwoman Castellino is a liaison to the board and former board member. What is your experience, Ben?
Well, that, obviously, it's Board of Education property. If they're looking to redo their playground, you know, that's their expense. Our shared services agreement allows us to do shared service. We do a lot at the high school because our, our rec programs are held at the high school. So we're able to assist in some shared service programs there. I, I doubt anything would qualify over at Hazel Avenue School. So, you know, it'd probably fall under the, the school board.
If we could just get confirmation, it would be greatly appreciated.
I, I do know, out of a conversation I had with Bill Pehoe a couple of weeks ago and trying to, you know, and he does have a list of all the parks that are going, that are, that are anticipated to have some updating or repairs and things. And we did talk about Hazel, and he said at one time, and I don't know how many years ago this was, but at one time, the township did actually have like a splash pad, like a kitty splash pad there that was taken out by the, the school district without notice to the township. But, you know, as you said, Councilwoman Castellino, it is Board of Ed property. But, yes.
They, they, now, my, now, in regards to the lower field that the rec used to use for Mountaintop years ago, I'm thinking playground up top, they do have the lower fields, whether that's town property or board property, but that is shared by the town. That's a separate item. So I'm thinking playground itself, that's up top. The field itself is a different matter.
If we could just get clarification, that would be great, instead of us trying to figure it out.
Just discussion. I don't think we're trying to figure it out. I was just imparting some information that you triggered when he's out of a conversation. I don't have anything further. Do any of my council colleagues have anything further? Yes, Councilwoman McCartney.
I just, you know, looking through all the notes that we took this evening, quite extensive, it seems like just about every commission that we have in town was touched upon through a lot of the public comments. And I just, if anyone is still on from public comment, just to remind everyone that all of those meetings are open to the public. If it's the Human Relations, Open Space, Pedestrian Safety, Downtown West Orange Alliance, OSPEC, the Economic Development, as soon as we get that, it's off. West Orange Environmental Commission, that's just really off the top of my head. But it just seemed like, looking at my notes, a lot of those concerns and issues that came up about having charrettes or listening to the public. Just to remind them that we are all serving as council liaisons to all of those commissions, outstanding volunteers, and that everyone is welcome to attend if they do have an issue or concern that they want to raise. That was it.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I, I did, and I'll, I'll forward you a link. I, I sent an email to the mayor on Monday morning after the meeting. And it wasn't my meeting. I was invited to the meeting by residents in Rock Spring area. And Councilman Rutherford joined me there as well. But I, I am going to share with you a link that I shared with the mayor about the charrette because that process is much different than what the, these our volunteer commissions do. It's more of an expertise in, in the planning area. But I, I do want to, you know, share that with you so that you understand what it is that they do differently than, than what we do here in town.
Yeah, that, and when I made reference to the Open Space Commission doing that, that's exactly what they did. They had someone from Land Conservancy, a landscape architect, I understand. But again, a lot of our volunteers are professionals too. So a lot of questions that are asked can be answered at any one of those commissions.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, council colleagues and to our administration, I want to say thank you very much to the residents who have stuck around till this point. Thank you for joining us today. And as always, feel free to reach out to any one of us by email or cell phone. You know how to reach us. And thank you for the robust discussions, everyone, this evening to my council colleagues. And certainly appreciate moving forward in, in a good space, I think. So, thank you, Tom.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Thank you and have a great night.